Okay, Claudia, we okay?
Yes.
Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on March 22, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex, at the Princeton Municipal Complex, and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March 17, 2023, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yeah.
Paulson? Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, unless we have objections, change the order of the meeting this evening and defer the discussions, well, the discussions and the minutes to the end of the meeting, and as I understand, the annual report will be heard at the next meeting. Is that right, Derek?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so let's do the resolution. Let's begin with the resolutions. The first resolution is file number Z22-25137 Wigan Street, Unit 1, 2, and 3, Block 2802, Lots 34.02, CO1-2CO3 in the R4 Zone of the Old Borough. Okay, the resolution was in your packets. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. Are there any comments, questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, Floyd.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Chen? I think I wasn't there for that. Oh, I'm sorry, you were there that day. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our next resolution is case number Z22-27933 Lee Avenue, Block 6905, Lot 33, in the R9 Zone in the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. Once again, the resolutions are in your packet. Are there any questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move it, Floyd.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
George, you're muted. You're muted, George.
Sorry, yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, and our last, our last resolution is case number, or file number Z22-297171 Westcott Road, Block 2.02, Lot 26, in the R1 Zone of the former borough. Again, resolutions in your packet, questions, comments, or if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move it, Floyd.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go into the applications now. Our first application is a carryover from the last meeting. It's file number Z22-270300 Witherspoon Street, Sacred Coffee Roasters LLC, 300 Witherspoon, Block 6902, Lot 4, in the B1 Zone. Who's going to start the presentation? Anyone?
We did start this, the previous meeting. This is Dan DeVermelsky. We started this previous meeting, did we not?
Yes.
Yes, we did. This will be a continuation.
Right, so I think I gave my start-up of it, and we heard from the applicant, right?
Correct. Mr. Higgin, I think we left you in the middle of your presentation, I believe.
Yes, and so can you hear me all right? Okay, so let me, what we'd like to do is summarize a bit, so I'm gonna pull our presentation back up, which we've updated to try to make it, you know, reflect that we've talked about this before, so now I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here, if that's all right, with our presentation.
Mr. Higgin, has this changed from what you presented at the last meeting?
Not really. We've knocked out some of the slides, and we've tried to combine them into one, so we don't have to go through as much, so there shouldn't be anything new on there.
All right.
So, is, is, I feel like I should know how to use Zoom better, but do you see the presentation on the screen? All right, and let me get to the view and to the full screen mode. And can you tell me if you see it all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let me start again. We'll try to go through this fast, so that we're not keeping you all here till 11:30 again. So, so last month, we went through Sacred's plan for artisanal coffee roasting at 300 Witherspoon Street, and they're soon to open cafe. We discussed their current operations in Munaki, New Jersey, their proposed delivery of green beans two to three times per year to the 300 Witherspoon site, their delivery to new, to nearby cafes and restaurants, one to two times per week of roasted beans. We talked about their general proposed arrangement of the equipment, a small-scale artisanal roaster of about, like, could be up to 15 kilograms per batch, and an afterburner which oxidizes off at least 95% of gaseous output such as smoke and odor. I propose now that we have Jonathan Haley and Serge Picard discuss a few summary slides to get us back to where they concluded last month, and then we'd like to briefly have Dr. Gaston Picard, a technical expert on food science and coffee roasting, and the compounds that are generated. We'd like to have him come and briefly talk for a few minutes about the compounds that are generated during roasting, how they should be viewed and how that's treated. And we're doing this because we understand that there was a letter sent to the board from the public, and we want to address those concerns, because, you know, we don't want to do something that people would, is unsafe, and so we'd like to address that upfront. So, I'd like to reintroduce Jonathan Haley, one of the conors of Sacred. Jonathan, would you please reintroduce yourself and summarize the slide you prepare here on the screen at this point? And so, I don't know if you have to let-
Mr. Haley, you continue to be under oath.
And let's see, is Jonathan on there? Let's see. And I'm not sure how to tell if he's-
Claudia, can you see if Mr. Haley's out?
Oh, he's there, but he's on mute, is what I'm, I'm being told.
Okay.
So he might be muted.
I don't see him, but perhaps do you-
No, can you exit the full most screen, because I can't see the rest of it.
He's in the attendees.
Correct.
Mr. Higgin, can you exit the full, the full screen mode? I can't see.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we need to, you just need to take it off temporarily.
Is that better, or do I need to stop sharing?
Yeah, I think stop sharing.
Okay.
Get you back. Once we can find you.
Right, oh, here we are.
Okay. Okay, so can you ask your client to raise his hands so I can see him? There's a lot of people on the other side.
Jonathan, if you can click on the, the, the speak button, the hand button.
I think I found them.
Okay.
Anybody else you need to move over?
We'll also need Serge Picard.
Hello.
And there, there will be one other person, and I hate to say it, but it may be labeled iPad. That's Dr. Picard, the, the technical expert that we're bringing on. So I'm sure, oh, it should be labeled Gaston Picard on his, his screen.
Say the name again, please.
Gaston Picard.
I found it, I found them.
So probably Serge and Gaston will probably keep their, their screen, their camera off and their mute on until, until it's their turn. Okay. Okay, so now, let's see, Jonathan, I'm gonna ask you to turn your mute off. And-
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Mr. Haley, you continue to be under oath, okay?
Understood.
Great.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go back to sharing my screen and go into full screen mode. So, I'd like to reintroduce Jonathan Haley. Jonathan, would you please reintroduce yourself and summarize the slide you prepared on the screen at this, now?
Hi, everyone. Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to speak again. Jonathan Haley, I'm a Princeton resident since 2005. I have three wonderful children here in the public schools. As mentioned at the last meeting, we're proposing a unique cafe experience that takes what we do at 20 Nassau just a few steps further. We're excited to provide Princeton residents and all the visitors that we have come to town the opportunity to see not just how their latte is made, but where their coffee comes from and how it transforms during the roasting process. The picture on this slide, I, it was up last time, it's, it's a cafe in Florida. We're just trying to show visually what we're hoping to also accomplish, which is a great cafe experience, a place for people to meet with a view into the roasting room and process. So that's what you see in that, that back left-hand corner is a micro artisanal roaster. So our cafe would not look exactly like this, but have a similar effect. And that effect being not unlike sitting at a chef's table at a restaurant where you get a view into the behind the scenes. So we're excited about that potential opportunity. At, at the last meeting, I mentioned that we have our green or unroasted coffee transported from the port to basically a room in Munaki where we roast currently. We have to do that at least once a month due to the limited size of that space. So we have frequent trips of that unroasted coffee going to that facility in Munaki. In addition, we make at least a weekly trip to go pick up the roasted, the cooked coffee at that facility. So that, that's about 100 miles round trip again, weekly. So the, I call it an immersive experience that we're proposing here has additional benefits beyond being a great meeting place, as I mentioned, and creation of what I, what I would consider fun job opportunities right here in town. Will eliminate a lot of needless back and forth from the port for that unroasted coffee, as well as those trips to pick up the roasted coffee. The, the green coffee, the unroasted coffee that we'll pick up, will limit that to just two to three times a year from the port to our cafe here at 300 Witherspoon. So we reduce those trips. That would be delivered in a, in a delivery van, and would take about 20 to 30 minutes to unload using a pallet jack into, again, the cafe. We anticipate deliveries of roasted coffee to our partners here in town to operate just the same as they do today, and a few will be able to do by foot, and the rest would be done by, by an SUV. We just support a few restaurants here, and we'd continue to do that utilizing roasted coffee from the cafe here at 300 Witherspoon. So that covers the experience, the, the deliveries in and out. And the last piece is, I'll just touch quickly and then hand it back to Bill and Serge to go in more detail on the roasting side, but we anticipate roasting once or twice a week, and that total time of roasting taking approximately three to five hours initially to support the volumes that we do today, and potentially growing to five to seven hours per week in the coming years. So hopefully that touches the, the experience, the, the deliveries in and out, and then the, the roasting time, so, Bill?
Yeah, I think Jonathan, last week you mentioned that the amount of traffic that already is at the facility, that what you would be doing is much less intense than what goes on now. Is that right?
Yeah, obviously, there's, there's a lot happening, amazing things happening at this building, and it's under transformation, and so I anticipate, once we're operating a cafe there, that everything that, that's happening will actually be a more pleasant experience from that standpoint.
Okay, thanks. Now, I'd like to reintroduce Serge Picard, the other cone order of Sacred. Serge, would you please reintroduce yourself and summarize the slide on the screen that you prepared? In particular, would you discuss the equipment?
Mr. Picard, you also remain under oath.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Bill, can you go back just quickly to the previous screen?
Okay.
So, first of all, I introduce myself. I can redo, I know we've got new participants and members. Serge Picard, been a Princeton resident also for 20 somewhat years. I currently live in the Hun neighborhood, and also have three kids. Well, one actually made it through the Princeton school system and is now at Boulder University. The other one's a junior at PHS right now, and my youngest daughter, 14, today, or tomorrow, is at PDS School System. So, the, the reason I wanted to go back to this is, this is actually very similar to the type of enclosure where we're proposing the coffee roasting to be. On the left, you see the little coffee roaster. That's difficult to say, but it's probably between a five to 10 kilo roaster, so 10 to 20 pounds. They're all European, so that's why they're talking kilos. And on the right, right behind that, behind the glass door, you actually see the green coffee bags burlap that are stacked there. So it's gonna be extremely similar setup where we have a closed glass enclosure for where the coffee roasting is proposed to occur. Maybe we can move one slide down, Bill, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, this is actually, we added this slide because it was part of a setup that we had on the previous slides, but to isolate what is the afterburner. Our total cafe area is going to be just shy of like 3,000 square feet. Sitting, restrooms, packing area for the little retail bags that we sell and producing or making the cold brew also. But the roasting area is gonna be just shy of a couple hundred square feet, so approximately 150 square feet. This unit is about two feet by three, maximum, or two and a half by four or five feet high, four. And that's the afterburner, and that's what we're proposing to add, which is very uncommon to artisanal micro roasting. You'll see that in bigger commercial manufacturing, but rarely in micro lot or micro roasting as we are going to do here at this location with our volumes. So what the afterburner does, it's basically a secondary treatment system. As we mentioned last week, the coffee roasting occurs between 400 and 600 degrees. This heats secondarily all the smokes and aromas and even flavors coming out of the roasting process, and basically carbonizes everything and neutralizes between 95 to 100%. And the technical specs are 95 to 90% of anything that could come out of a roasting process. So it is food processing, but we're adding this additional equipment just to make sure that there is no negative effect, either odors or smoke from the roasting or pure smell of coffee. The coffee roaster that we saw on the, actually, slide right before, did not have one, a unit like this, it was piped, actually, we see it right now, it's piped directly to the wall, and probably to vent shaft that goes to, under the roof or the side of the building, and that's the common setup.
Mr. Higgin, I think maybe since this, I believe, is a new slide, why don't we make this exhibit A2? And what is, depicts is the clean stream that's the manufacturer afterburner. Would that be a fair description of it?
That is a fair description, and we'll send this presentation over to you.
Okay.
Serge, is there any possibility that you could do commercial-scale roasting at this facility, and if, if not, why not?
There's zero possibility, Zilch. It's, it basically doesn't have the, the physical capacity to store the green coffee, receive, roast. There's no square footage, there's nothing access to the building, and I'm familiar with commercial roasting, as we mentioned last week, because we've got a major operation up in Canada that does this. This is purely artisanal show from green coffee bean to, all the way to the coffee cup.
So if, if you're proposing at, at most a 15-kilogram roaster here, could you describe how large your commercial roasters are at your facility in Canada?
Yes, manufacturing and commercial, as opposed to a small batch, that we're talking micro batch here. At our plant, we're about 150,000 square feet. And that's 150,000. We have three, 350-pound roasters that operate for just shy of 20 hours a day. So you think of it, it's basically 1,000 pounds of coffee roasted every 10 minutes. So you have to have the potential to receive the green coffee and then treat it, cool it off, and do all the secondary processes of grinding it and packaging it and re-shipping it. So that's the type of the commercial operation that I'm also very familiar with, but is completely different scale than, we're not even in the same realm of operations that we're discussing here.
So, and the reason I ask you, I think it's important for people to know that this can morph into commercial roasting.
Exactly.
Okay, now, I think we've talked about a variety of, a range of sizes, the potential roaster you might use. Can you please explain, you know, this idea of a range and why you're talking about a range of roasters?
But it's actually more arranging technology. So right now, without getting too technical, almost all the coffee roasted is in the fossil fuels. So all the coffee roasters that are available will be natural gas or propane or even fuel. Technology is coming out in micro roasting for artisanal to convert to fully electric. So it doesn't change anything on the roasting process or the aromas, it's just the heat source. So instead of having that gas heat source, we'd be electric. We like moving away from fossil fuels, and that's our intention, but the, the coffee roasters are available, the, the artisanal level 15-kilo batches, but they're starting to be released, and for 12 to 18-month period to be released in the US also. So when we talk about the range, is more of the fuel source.
So you're, you're describing trying to do this coffee roasting in an environmentally sustainable manner. Is that, would you describe how Sacred tries to do that in all its operations as a, basically as a way of life?
Yeah, and not just Sacred a way of life, but us and me as part of the community. I mentioned that it was a guy who lived in the Hun neighborhood, our family does. I actually, he purchased the lot with the house, the first one that was built in the Hun neighborhood from a gentleman, John Lee, that was built in 1953, and instead of bulldozing the house to construct the, our new residence, we actually took the family project of deconstructing the house, brick by brick, board by board, removing and reusing all the materials, the windows, the doors, everything. Only 5% could not be reused, and basically 95% of it gets reused and repurposed as opposed to everything going to the landfill. And then we built our house 100% solar, energy efficient, with modulating heat pumps, by-star, the whole concept that we do in our personal lives, we bring to the businesses and extend that within our operations, with us and our employees. I put together a program since the first Sacred opened on Nassau to reuse and basically recycle everything that we have organic. So we produce a lot of coffee spent grounds from the brewing, the espresso, et cetera. And we put together a program in partnership with the local organisms. One of them is the Delaware Water- And one of them is the Delaware Water, I think, a small farm program with individuals that the have a micro farming. We bring the spent coffee on a weekly basis for composting. The second partnership we have is actually with PDS. They've got a big project to, it's been going on for a long time to compost all the cafeteria leftovers. So we partner with them. We bring them our coffee grounds and it's actually super high nutrients and an accelerator for composting. If anybody wants some, we've got a lot. But the reason is it's already wet and like I said, nutrient rich, so it accelerates the composting of anything else that it will be matched with. So we do it throughout the whole process and even working on something interesting where we could get our green coffee beans with zero emissions potentially sailing wind sailing from South and Central America up to New Jersey. So interesting stuff in the future, but we think of it on a daily basis, we walk the walk.
Um, there was one question that looked like it was raised. I don't know if it was raised by the board or the public, but it had to do with afterburners and I don't know, Serge, do you have much experience with afterburners? And have you reviewed them, studied them, or have you ever used them?
Review them to purchase for this, but we don't use them at our commercial facility in Canada. But I'm obviously very familiar with it.
Okay. Okay, I don't know if that answers the question, but are they standard equipment that are well known, well used, well characterized?
Especially on commercial level equipment, yes.
Okay.
They've been around, they've been around for decades and it's a technology that's not just used for coffee. Afterburners are used for many different food processing or other industrial processes also.
It's just something you would, a technician could add to the pipe for the affluent gas from the roaster. It's that is it that straightforward?
Yep. And there's a big red button and a yellow one and that's on off or they're actually most of them are linked with the coffee roaster. So when the coffee roaster is on, the afterburners are in. You buy the systems together, that's how they are.
Okay.
Could you possibly, since you're talking about the afterburners, can you talk about the operation of the afterburner in in a bit more detail?
So basically it's a secondary flame or heat source that occurs after the exhaust or the venting pipe of the coffee roaster itself. So coffee roasting starts at close to room temperature because the coffee, the green coffee beans are at room temperature. And they increase to a peak of 400 something degrees. And you'll have your reactions during the 10 minutes of the process. And within the last four minutes is where you start, you're finished off with the dehumidifying of the coffee bean, the green coffee bean itself. It's at 12% humidity. And on average, you bring it down to 4%. Once that's done, you actually start roasting the beans themselves. They go from green to light dark to medium dark to dark if you do a very dark coffee, like a French roast type. Once the roast, so for those last four minutes, that's where you want to be treating the affluent what vents out of the coffee roaster and it enters a chamber that is between 850 to 1200 degrees. So that basically vaporizes everything and the doctor can, that's going to speak after can explain exactly what happens on a chemical level, molecular level. I'm a business person with a technical background in equipment. Can't talk to the chemistry of it, but so basically you burn off smoke and turn everything back to CO2. So smoke odors, aromas and vapor basically becomes CO2.
Okay. Sufficially answer your question, sir.
Well, it'll start. I guess we'll have more discussion of this as we move on. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we'd like to now introduce Dr. Gaston Picard. He's a technical expert on in food science and food chemistry. And he's going to talk about the compounds generated during roasting and how they're treated to reduce the the gas emissions that you're you're asking about. So we brought him on because there's a letter provided the zoning board that raised some questions about the compounds released during coffee roasting. So he's going to address these through these questions and I'd like to introduce him now if I can get him to take off his mute and turn on his camera. And I guess you need to swear him in, right?
I do. And then if you want to qualify him as an expert, we'll need to go through qualification.
That's that. That's what we're doing first. So let's see, do we have him?
I think, Mr. Here, can you stop cheering for the moment?
Yes, let me do that. Okay. Okay, I see him there, but his he's got his mute on and his camera off. Someone in the room with him could help him turn his camera on and his mute off. That would be helpful. Okay, well, we'll have him on in just a second here. Can you hear? Yes, we hear you.
We can't see you yet.
Really here?
I'm sure you are, but I'm afraid we need to be able to see it.
Yeah.
Click on, you put your cursor. It says start video or video.
Yeah. It only has an audio function.
Sometimes if you run your cursor over the bottom or the top of the screen, a menu will appear.
It's going to go to a different computer here.
Guess that will work.
I don't hear nothing.
Well, wait. Picard?
Yes, no, I hear you. Yeah.
I think they're going to swear you in now.
Yes, Dr. Picard, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Picard, would you briefly summarize your educational background?
I do have a biochemistry degree at college. And after, after what I did, a master degree in food science. And I got a PhD from a in chemical and biological ocean graphy.
Dr. Picard, have you ever taught?
Did you say chemical? And I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Biological.
Hi, okay. Okay.
This was done along 50 years ago in in New York at La Monde d'Arte of Columbia University. So that's why I lost my English since that time.
Okay, Dr. Picard, have you ever taught food science or food chemistry at the university level?
Yes, yes. Food chemistry, physical, physical chemical of food and for 35 years.
And Dr. Picard, do you have any experience in roasting coffee beans?
Yes. I had the, among the graduate student that I did have a master degree or PhD. One of them was the last one on the dealing with the roasting coffee bean. And her project was dealing with related to the evaluation of the aroma by comparing a physical, physical chemical method versus organolytic evaluation, which is done in the industry.
Do you have any other experience in?
I, I also did several to major project on the, on in industrial recovery of aroma, coffee aroma lost in during the roasting process. And we were working, we work on recovering this aroma and putting it back in the coffee.
Okay. And now I think Serge Picard mentioned that and it's the the board should be aware that you and Serge are related. You're his father. Serge mentioned a company in Canada, it's called Cafe William. It's his, the roasting operations. Are you involved at all with Cafe William or with Sacred here in Princeton?
No, no. I'm a full professor at University of La Valle in food science.
So do you consult in the food and coffee industry as a food industry expert witness?
Yes, over the years I did many project comes, was asked to be consultant or to be what they call an expert witness in in the related to food science or in the environmental problem. And some of them were related, for example, for claim of food wasted and so on. So I used to be an expert on this type of problem. And I was also an attaché expert of the government of Canada related to some problematic raise following an mission, economic, economic mission in Europe. And there were some problems. And so I testified for the government of Canada at this occurrence and several other small case also.
And you mentioned a food loss case. Was that in court in Canada?
Oh, yeah, always in court and under oath and so on. Yeah, like today.
Okay.
Dr. Picard, could you just repeat? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. You said you've been a professor for many, many years. At what university? No, I didn't hear that part.
Oh, yeah, I did at the University of La Valle, Quebec City.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Dr. Picard, did you read the article provided to the zoning board by a member of the public?
Yes, I did read the article.
I'm not sure. When you say the article, are you talking about?
I think there was a letter with an article or bulletin by NIOSH.
Yeah, I'm not sure though, that that was presented to the board. There's an additional letter, more mature lengthy letter that the objective presented that was posted and distributed to the board.
Is that the one that has the the NIOSH bulletin attached to it? That's that's what I'm talking about. I didn't know if there was something else.
No, there, there was a, there was a more recent lengthy letter that was provided to the board that has been posted on the the board's website, but I don't think that NIOSH bulletin was distributed to the board. So if you, I think first we'd need to ask the board if they're going to accept Dr. Picard as an expert witness. And I guess, Mr. Hill, how do you want to define his area of expertise?
He's an expert in food chemistry and food science?
And I guess though, we're also, you're specifically representing that he's also an expert witness, I guess, in are we saying the the chemicals that are involved in coffee roasting or the release of chemicals or?
Yeah, the the compounds that would be produced during coffee roasting.
Okay. All right. Now, is the board going to accept Dr. Gaston before he goes on?
I would think that we can accept his credentials and let's move on with the testimony.
All right. So now, as I don't think that was distributed by the board, I don't know if Dr. Gaston, you want to just try and kind of reference what it is you reviewed for the board's benefit. It's a bulletin that was issued by Occupational Safety and Hazard Administration. Generally, I guess it referred to coffee, coffee roasting and health issues that I guess could arise from it, I believe for workers in coffee facilities. But Dr. Guest, I I interrupted you, Dr. Picard. So if you want to go back now and indicate, you know, what your thoughts were on that.
Okay. Effectively, I, I read that paper, which was concerning the compound produced during the roasting of coffee and whether it was a concern for the people working around in the plant. So this, this paper I read, yes.
Dr. Picard. Excuse me, just one second. Karen, do you think, do you think we should, they should read that into evidence? So everybody hears it?
Well, the Claudia, you'll need to.
And the reason we're bringing this up is it was our understanding this was sent directly to the board and that so that the board had been made aware of this. And that we felt like we should educate you and address any concerns that this may have created.
I think it's fine that you're presenting the testimony. At the time, the letter that was provided by the applicant was, shall we say, just addressing their general concerns as a neighbor and ordinarily, the board would require something like that. Have the have the objective come in and testify to it. As far as the OSHA document is concerned, I suspect it's going to be a little bit hard to read it into the record. I guess, Claudia, buddy, do you have that available? I guess we can shoot it out now or?
Well, you know, we could, we can proceed without the article and we could just talk about the compounds produced during coffee roasting and how they're treated, what you can expect to come out of the pipe on the top of 300 Wetherspoons Street and how concerned neighbors should be about it. Would that be?
I think that's helpful. I mean, the the bulletin does reference various chemicals that are part of what they're calling volatile organic compounds, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide. So I think if Dr. Picard can address his testimony to, you know, what is being released? And is there exposure? Will people in the neighborhood have exposure to? You know, compounds that will be damaging to them, that that would be helpful for the board.
And and that's.
Michael, excuse me one second. Michael, do you have a question?
Well, I was going to have a suggestion as we try to move forward. I in, we didn't see the letter, but I was going to ask questions about VOCs and and then things other than vapor and fumes, which has been talked about. But more the particles and the chat and compounds. So let me just put a question mark at the end of that. And and what are those chemicals and compounds? Yeah. By name, what is the potential of any harm to humans if there wasn't an? to humans if there wasn't an afterburner? And what is the potential harms, if any, if there is an afterburner? Um those types of questions, so if you just take it as questions from the board, may we could move on and not worry about this letter.
Well, Dr. Picard is gonna be addressing exactly that, and I promise you and I didn't talk in advance. Um but that's exactly what he's prepared to talk about. So, um.
Michael, okay.
The, yeah, I'm okay with that. I've, okay, I've been trying to do my reading on the afterburners and roasters, so.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, let's, let's go forward. Those are the concerns.
Okay, so Dr. Picard, you heard mentioned volatile organic compounds, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, do you have any experience with these type of compounds?
Yes.
Could you describe a bit of that?
Yes, quite a few years ago, it started with my master degree. Uh after, like I said, I did a master degree in food science at La Val University, and then the, the topic of my mission was the study and identification and characterization of volatile organic compounds which create the aroma of the apple juice when you ferment, you do a fermentation and you produce cider. So I studied those compounds by, with the, still today, they use the same technology, gas chromatography and spectrometry of mass to iden- identify those compounds. At that time, I, 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 in my master, at my master degree in nineteen sixty-nine uh that I finished, uh I identified at least, oh, there was at least two hundred and fifty compounds, organic volatile compounds responsible for the aroma of the, this, this type of product, the different variety of apple. And during the fermentation, there is an evolution and good, and let me say, let me tell you very simply, this, these compounds are the aroma, what you smell, what you taste. And the, in science and chemistry, they are widely, widely present in your food, in the nature, they are acid, aldehyde, cetone, ester, and all these organic families of compounds are they are in your food, and that's the aroma uh of the food. So I did that study on my, for my master degree uh on the food, food chemistry. So that was when my first uh experience with the, with that.
So, Dr. Picard, about how, coffee aroma, as an example, about how many volatile organic compounds does it have?
Well, okay, several years, several years after, I introduced some coffee project at the university with my graduate student, and one of them, one of my graduate student, she did a master degree on evaluation, the coffee aroma uh dur- during different condition of roasting by comparing the world-used method of, method, which is organic evaluation, organoleptic evaluation. And we brought a new chemical, uh physical chemical method, method to evaluate also this aroma profile. So this was done more recently. And in the coffee, you have today, in the literature, scientific literature, literature, at least eight hundred and fifty compounds, which are responsible of the aroma. When you smell coffee, that's the bouquet, the aroma of this total compound. And they, this will vary depending of the type of roasting that you do and the, the very, the different coffee that you use also. But there is many, many, many of those compounds, organic volatile compounds, every uh food has this smell. Yeah, that's, that's how you differentiate apple, pineapple and all these.
So when you cook an apple pie, for example, do you release volatile organic compounds?
Obviously, definitely, yeah, that's how you recognize what you're cooking.
When you open a bottle of wine, do you release volatile organic compounds?
Much, much more again, and, and they vary again depending of the the sipage, the origin of the grape, and uh, you know, and the volatile compound besides alcohol, ethanol, but there is all two, three, four, five hundred chemicals, which are responsible for the flavor. The flavor implies what you, the taste and the odor. And eighty percent of the flavor is by your nose, the, the odor.
And what about cooking, for example, eggs in butter?
Oh, that's another example, is uh, one of the, in this article that I was reading, they referred deacetyl, uh which is a basic compound natural in butter, butter, everybody use butter. But when you cook, for example, in an egg in the, with butter in the pan, with eat, well, you have odors that are coming out, and one of them is provoked and given by deacetyl, and it is a good odor that people like. Everybody does that all over the place, they, on the earth, cooking eggs uh on the, in butter.
So, Dr. Picard?
Yeah.
At, at a restaurant, when they're cooking food at a restaurant in butter, is it releasing?
Same thing, uh every cook or person related to food uh cooking, uh they will produce a lot of VOC, which are good odors. But in order to avoid people getting problem, because some people in the uh, you know, there is no two people alike on the earth. So in order to avoid problem, uh the technology is relatively simple. Ventilation, if you go to the restaurant, they will, you will see a big old vacuum pulling the air out of the building, so that the people working with the eggs in the pan and everything will not uh breathe and very closely uh this odor, and the same thing as in the coffee roasting. Uh you have ventilation, so these people are not subjected to the odor all the chemical, even if it's good. Uh but if you, if you breathe that for hours day, well, it's like too much. So normally, in the technology is ventilation, they remove that from the worker.
Well, let me ask a question here, so you have obviously many, many chemicals, volatile organic compounds that are released into the air. One question is, are any of those potentially harmful? That's one question. And you say obviously ventilation will, will move those odors out of the indoors to the, to the air outside, but then you have, then you have the community. And you're exhausting that into the community.
Yeah. Okay, first question, uh are these products dangerous or toxic or whatever? Every, there is only three liquids that you can drink safely. Three, water, ethanol and liserol. All the, the other liquid that exists, there is thousand of them, are toxic. So the problem is related to the concentration of these compounds. Now, when we think, think about the aroma that we talk about, apple, uh wine and everything, you know.
We talk about coffee?
Yeah.
Could we talk about coffee and roasting and not?
Yeah, yeah.
Apple and wine and.
But the question, the question.
And, and not about drinking stuff, about inhaling volatile compounds?
Thank you, Mike.
That's what the concerns are, we're, we're talking around this.
Okay, the question, well, uh the answer to the question of coffee aroma is there is no problem that could cause disease or whatever. They are doing that since the centuries, and that because the concentration of those compounds are extremely low, and that's what make the flavor. So uh coffee aroma is not bad per se, it cannot be. I, I don't know if, I don't understand the question properly, but uh.
Well, Dr. Picard, how, in your experience, how are these volatile organic compounds produced by coffee roasting, bakeries, at commercial scale, how are they regulated generally?
Oh, yeah, well, oh, the, there is com- governmental uh agencies with control that, FDA in USA, uh Health Canada. Every country, country has the control on these products. And the, if the evaluation of each of these compounds uh is done by establishing the LSD uh lethal dose divided by one hundred, so that eh no human being would be affected by this compound. And uh so this is applied by the governmental agencies, FDA and Health Canada, so that's how the, it is regulated. But nobody, even this agency will say that coffee aroma is bad, they cannot sit up because it's co- it's a, um, it's used since centuries. Apple, everything these are natural, they are natural, and you cook it, so it's a natural thing that people do since uh hundreds of years.
So, Dr. Picard, the, the compounds that are produced during coffee roasting, suppose we didn't have an afterburner, we just left, let the gases go out, would it be harmful to the neighborhood?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
No, go on, sir.
Pardon me?
You can continue.
Yeah.
Uh it is not, it cannot be harmful to the neighborhood. Uh but the, to smell coffee, uh it's very good when you take a cup of coffee. But if you have to smell it, uh I'm speaking for the people living uh in the neighborhood with, especially with the industrial big plant, you smell it every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that's annoying, it's a nuisance, nuisance. Uh and that's how the government in every country, that's how they address this problem. They said, okay, the people around, the coffee order is not bad for your health, but it's it's not because you smell it too much for the three hundred sixty-five a day uh per year. So they require the installation of the technology, which is well, well-known and the equipment, the afterburner, and this uh it was discussed before. It is an apparatus, but relatively simple, it high degree, the high temperature twelve hundred, up to twelve hundred degrees centigrade will destroy literally every organic molecule. So you don't smell nothing after that burning, because you will have CO2, oxidized carbon.
Dr. Picard, would it, would it um oxidize and burn off all the smoke?
Everything, all of it, you won't, you will not smell, it will be undetectable even by your nose.
Will it burn off the volatile organic compounds?
Yes, yes, yeah, one hundred percent.
Will it burn off the, any chafe that comes from the beans? Any chafe, chaff, you know, the, like the little shell, the?
Yeah, yeah, when, when we speak about uh organic volatile compound, it may include, include also some uh very fine nanoparticles, it, it's burned completely.
So what will come out of the stack from an afterburner, you know, there's a pipe and there's an afterburner, and then there's a coffee roaster, what will come out of that pipe when that afterburner is operating?
Eat, 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 no, no, no smell.
Would there be carbon dioxide?
Uh CO2, yeah, but I mean, no organic, uh when I thought, this apparatus is designed to remove the odor, so what will uh be left is CO2, yeah, molecule. Because the ma- organic matter that we talk about, the volatile organic carbon are made of carbon. Carbon is the main uh element, and when you oxidize those product, they are oxidized with oxygen, that's why you get CO2, carbon dioxide.
So, Dr. Picard, would you be comfortable living next to this place with an afterburner?
Uh, no problem, that's what happened in many, many big cities in Europe, in USA, Canada also.
Wha- what, what do you mean, what happens?
This is what uh people are living with in the major big cities in Montreal, Toronto, you know, they have in the, in Germany, uh New York, Boston, they have a big industrial uh roasting coffee facilities. When people, the population rise around these plants, well, after one, two, three, five years, too many people around complain. So the people of the city will require, and it is also accepted by FDA, for example, in city, in USA, to install an afterburner, so they destroy the odor, odor.
So you say they complained about the odor, the neighbors? Okay, and then they install an afterburner to address that?
Yeah.
Doctor Picard, just for the board's clarification, isn't carbon monoxide, you can't smell it, right? Does it, isn't it odorless?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the afterburner doesn't destroy the carbon dioxide. Does it all, does it do anything to carbon monoxide?
No, not to my knowledge, but to this problem, you will get much more industry behind the car with fossil fuel that you oxidize, then you got a lot of CO and CO2.
So you're saying that, yes, but the process is still gonna release carbon monoxide and carbon dioxide?
Mainly CO2.
If, if I understand, if I understand your testimony, you're saying that it's in very minimal um amounts or it's not harmful uh once it's gone through the afterburner or it's just such a small amount that it's, it's not detrimental?
Yeah, I would say that when it is passing through the, the afterburner, there is a dilution effect with the air, and normally in the air, you do have four hundred ppm of CO2. Okay, four hundred ppm per million, uh it may, even in the many environment in room, closed room, the CO2 concentration may double, eight hundred and they up, go up to one thousand ppm. In, in our case, the, with the installation of a, uh an afterburner with the dilution with, of the air coming with it, you rarely uh increase major, the major environmental air outside. Because it is, especially with an artisanal plant, that you've got practically no organic matter to be oxidized. And you've got a factor of dilution, and the CO2 produced will maybe raise, raise the concentration to four hundred to four hundred and ten ppm. And when it's diluted in the air after a block away, you will not dis, you will not smell it. And you will not detect it neither.
Dr. Picard, you mentioned restaurants and how they vent the the air from restaurants. So are they venting carbon monoxide?
Oh, obviously.
And carbon dioxide?
As soon as you cook, uh like I said previously, when you cook food, high temperature, you make a steak on a grill. You will have CO2, you will have CO. And the restaurant, they are, they are big producer of it. Because they do it uh every week for maybe hundreds of people every day, each restaurant. And what they do is to evacuate it in the air outside.
And do they use an, do they use an after burner attached to their vent hood?
No, no, they just, you will smell it if you go uh around major big restaurant, you will smell what is going on outside.
So with the after burner, it's sacred. And if you compare it to a restaurant where they're perhaps cooking eggs in butter. And they have a vent hood, which will have more volatile organic compounds coming out to the neighbors?
The the restaurant, you have it all because they don't destroy it.
Which will have more CO2 coming out, the restaurant or sacred with an after burner?
Uh in after burner, you, you will have both, in both cases, you will have CO2. Because uh the restaurant, when they make their cooking, uh it might be done with uh gas. So you've got CO2 also there produced. And all this is evacuated outside and with the flavor, the aroma. So rather than burning it, they evacuate it in the air. And it's very, well, it's typical, like I said previously, uh the FDA, Health Canada, all this regular rig- regularity, uh regular uh agency. They cannot stop, uh say to the restaurant, don't make food, don't bake food, don't cook. Because produce some uh volatile organic compound, it's, it's what you feed. One of my professors used to tell me in nineteen sixty, when I was doing my master degree, if you don't have, won't have any problem with food, stop eating. And then you will have much more other problem.
Dr. Picard, do our perfumes, are they volatile organic compounds?
Yes, for sure. And and these, it's much worse. Worse than sin that they are chemical like refinery, if you happen to go uh close to a refinery, uh few uh uh fossil fuel refinery. Uh these are chemical which are harmful to your many cells of your body. And whereas food, well, uh if you don't eat your food because they are dangerous, you've got a big problem.
So, you know, Mr. Floyd, ha- has, has Dr. Picard addressed your concerns?
Yes, yes. I think you have let him, for me, let him back to more substance that I wanted to hear than, yeah, I'm I'm glad you got a little more pointed in your questions.
Well, thanks. It's just, it's.
But other, other, other board members may have questions.
Yeah, we really would love to have questions. Dr. Picard has many years' experience. I I'm hoping, I'm sure he can answer any question and and address any concern. I mean, he's.
Well, let's do this. Let's have uh Dr. Picard finish his testimony. And then we'll open it up to the board for questions.
Okay, um. You know.
Maybe I can, maybe I can add another point which I was thinking, but it's very useful when you're thinking about the study that the paper that I saw, that I read, that you asked me to read. And well, this was related to some problem, disease that some people may have with coffee roasting, respiring diacetyl and so on. You know, like I said, I was teaching food chemistry and including food additive. And food additive in the USA FDA, eh there is at least four thousand of those compounds. And diacetyl is one of them. And the pantanoid, detoid, the product, the chemicals that were mentioned in that paper, they are accepted as food additive. Basically, so eh it 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 is a what I, is important to, to, to take is that I briefly said that there is no two people alive on the earth. And in term of biochemistry, some people are, become very sensitive to one, whether it is an acid, an aldehyde, for example, smoke, uh coffee. Some people cannot drink coffee because they will have some problem, they don't sleep or whatever. But the thing is that eh I have one experience. I don't know if you know.
Sure, I just keep freezing up.
What, what's up? Did you say he's freezing up?
No, continue, please.
Okay, okay.
Yeah?
Yes, continue.
Well.
Okay, so. I was just, I was, I was going to explain why some people were more sensitive and so on, but uh that's another biochemical and physiological problem that we could study and biochemistry.
Why don't we, why don't we, we have about three to four more minutes to conclude. Why don't we run through that real quickly and then, you know, Mr. Picard, Dr. Picard is ready for questions as is. Serge Picard and Jonathan Haley. Um so I'd like to pull up our presentation again and um and share it if I may. Eh although I'm gonna have to get a little help on that, I'm. Okay. So I'm gonna share my screen real quickly again, if that's all right. I'm gonna have to find it now. I think this is it here. Nope. Let's see, do you, do you see the uh the variances requested slide?
Yes.
Okay. So sacred is seeking two variances summarized on this slide. One is a variance for the requirement that we provide a loading space as Mr. Haley testified. Sacred will be receiving deliveries of green beans about two to three times per year and sending out roasted coffee beans in their own cars a couple of times per week. The other variances for the permission to roast, which is considered food processing or manufacturing. So here we're summarizing the positive, the positive criteria set that we have to show that it was set out by Jonathan Haley and Serge Picard. Moving the artisanal roasting to three hundred witherspoon street from Monoczy, New Jersey will reduce the hundred and ten mile round trips that they're having to conduct for roasting as well as all those other trips to bring beans. So it's gonna help the environment that way. You also heard about the innovative experiential retail for the roasting of beans in Princeton. And how that's gonna provide benefits to the local community, including the creation of of interesting and hopefully fun jobs here in Princeton. We also have to address negative criteria, and we believe we've done that with our three witnesses. Um they've explained how they're gonna address a smell or odor from roasting by using an after burner. A well-known technology, an old technology. They've explained how the loading will be significantly less intense than the current use of adjacent tenants. In conclusion, we believe granting these two variances will not impact the intent and purpose of the master plan in Princeton ordinance and instead reinforces these provisions. So, let me stop sharing now.
Mr. Here, since right now you're going through the criteria, you feel you've addressed, um. I know you don't have a planner, but our planner's memo notes that is part of your special reasons. I know you've referenced some purposes of zoning. You also need to show that this property is particularly suited to this use. And you may have addressed that throughout the testimony, but it might be helpful for the board for you to um or have your client speak to that. What is about this particular property that um makes it suited for this?
Well, maybe uh I can invite Jonathan or Serge, but I mean, I can start off by saying that they're gonna have a coffee shop there. So there's already planning to be a cafe. They're planning to have offices there. It is central into town. It's easy to walk to from many places. Um I think it's public that Tiger Labs is moving in there. Uh home, I think it's um high tops is there. You have Capitol Health there, you have a, you said you have a lot of businesses there. A lot of people can walk there. So it's, it's, it's perfect for that, for being close into town. It also is helping to develop an area that maybe could use a little bit of help. It's, it's, it's not as vibrant as the downtown, but it's getting that way through all this going on at three hundred witherspoon street. So maybe um Jonathan or Serge, if you want to um add anymore, I don't know if they're on there, if I've said everything they would want to say.
I'm on here. I don't know if you can still hear me.
Yep, we hear you.
Yeah.
Great. I would just add, I mean, Bill hit the main points. Uh it it's a unique property. I think it's uh, it is well situated in terms of how the the growth of town is, is going from a um uh from a retail standpoint. Uh I, we have always aspired to be a uh additive to the community and uh so what we did at twenty Nassau was just try to fit uh a need that we felt people coming together uh was uh in in demand. And I think with, with, at least with the people that come to our coffee shop, I'm pretty sure that they would agree with that. And so I think there's a very few people who used to do that at at scale uh here in Princeton. Uh this is one of those properties. It's I think it mentioned, we have almost three thousand square feet and the majority of that is going to be uh dedicated to uh coffee and the congregation around coffee, which I know um people really value. Um so that would just be my add to that.
I I I can also point out that we really agree with the planners, the towns planners report. We think he was spot on. Um and that's why we really focused on the odors and the smoke and and what the effect would be on the neighbors. That's, that's why Dr. Picard is here and um was the focus of today's discussion.
Mr. Here, just one more question, maybe for the board's benefit um for Dr. Picard. Uh Dr. Picard, do after burners have some kind of monitor on them? How do you know that they are working properly? How do you know that they're functioning and um doing what, you know, doing their job?
The the literature, uh scientific literature, I read maybe twenty twenty-five paper on this, on this topic. And it is very well known in the scientific community how they work and what they destroy. So.
Okay.
There is no doubt, no doubt, because there's no problem.
I I think what I'm, what I'm asking is just like any kind of mechanical device, is there something on that equipment that that lets you know it is operating properly? Is there like, I mean, any kind of machinery can help function, so.
Yeah, Dr. Picard.
Haley can speak to that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I would just say that uh it it was spoken to the the um uh function of that after burner is obviously heat added. Uh so there is a temperature reading. Certainly, if that is not operating, we would know that by looking at that temperature reading. And so obviously that is a situation where we would uh address roasting until the after burner was operable again.
So, so just the, just the temperature um validates the operation of the after burner. There is no, there's no measuring of any of the uh of any, anything coming out of it?
Well, I think Dr. Picard obviously spoke to the fact um quite a bit that you you'll smell it in the atmosphere if uh that after burner is not operating.
All right, but Mr. Haley, the reason I'm, I'm raising it is because I suspect we're going to hear from the public that they're concerned. So are you saying that if we, if neighbors smell? I I don't know how I would, how you would describe it, the smell of something burning, but that means the after burner is not functioning correctly. Because I would think that the smell of coffee, to a certain extent, that could be um subjective. So I'm, I'm asking how, how, if I'm in the public and I say, I don't think it's working because I can smell coffee or I smell burning. That's why I asked, is there something on this after burner, some mechanism that would tell you, no, it is, it's functioning fine. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It's burning off um what it needs to burn off. So that, that's why I raised it and I may not have phrased it um clearly, but um.
No, Karen, I think, I think you're correct. I think you're correct is, there's gotta be some way of validating the functioning of the after burner, I would imagine. Other, is there any?
Yeah, so I was giving you a layman's answer. That's how the the general public would know that that after burner wasn't either on or operating where you would start to smell. Uh, yes, roasted coffee. Uh it is an expensive piece of machinery and I'm certain that there is a a way in which we will be able to determine whether that is operating uh properly. I can't give you an exact answer on exactly what that function is, but I could certainly come back to you with that.
Okay, I think that's important to know how we would, how, how it can be monitored. Does this, just as an aside, does this equipment require any filters?
No, it it's just, you have the, the gas going from the roaster, the air going from the roaster into, over the flame. It oxidizes off all the compounds and then it goes straight out. It's.
To the atmosphere.
I mean, it, to me, analogous, a piece of equipment would be an elect, a, a gas hot water heater. That if you, you can, you can touch that, the pipe and you know it's hot and you know it's working. You can also turn on the hot water, but it's if, if you touch this piece of equipment and it's not warm, it ain't on.
Okay, but Miss, Mr. Haley said there is some way to validate the operation of the equipment.
Temperature, temperature.
As, yes, sorry, guys. So yeah, as I mentioned, there's, there's obviously a temperature monitor on the 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 piece of equipment. We will know whether it is operating at the necessary temperature to uh to uh affect the result. Exactly how that is communicated to us by the machinery, I can come back to the board with specifics.
I mean, I, I think it should be recognized that these are old pieces of equipment that have been around for a long time. They're very standard. There's, this is not new innovative technology. It's a flame.
Yeah.
It's, you know. It's, it's, it's nothing that creative.
It's too simple, very simple. But expensive.
Right. You know, I I guess one question I could ask, um if I'm permitted to ask Mr. Bridger. Um, not the, but I, have you discussed this proposal that we're proposing with the Health Department of Princeton and do they have any concerns?
And if they would, the, the Health Department would be the party that would investigate it. But I'm not gonna provide testimony for somebody that's not here. Um.
Okay.
I don't think there's any permit.
And the reason I ask is I talked to Jeff Grosser about this. And he said he was gonna discuss it with you and that he had no concerns, but um he's, he said you would speak for him tonight. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that was when I talked to him. Either late last night.
Yeah, I can't speak for him. He, you know, I knew know that if there is a complaint regarding the smell, that it would go to the Health Department or the Bureau Board of Health and he would be investigating it. Um and I don't believe there's a municipal permit for, for coffee roasting.
And and there's also not a New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection requirement for the coffee roasting.
Well. Are you making a statement, Mr. Here? Are you asking?
Uh there isn't. I went through the regulations about, and there isn't the compounds that are produced that they regulate that that we would fit in. It, these aren't the same compounds. They mostly would be solvents and cleaning solvents. Um we do actually have a questionnaire into the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for. Um, we do actually have a questionnaire into the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for. A confirmation, but we haven't gotten that back yet.
So Mister, just to confirm, so what, what, what? Your testimony is, is that if the public smells. Coffee. Is that an indication then that the afterburner is not working properly?
I think.
Certainly, if they walk into our cafe, they're gonna smell.
No, 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 I'm not talking about in the cafe. I'm saying if you live across the street or two blocks away or whatever the case may be. And. You smell. Coffee. In the air, outside, not in your cafe. Are you saying then that would be an indication that the afterburner is not working properly?
Yeah.
I was, I was stating that in an ongoing. I'm sorry, if somebody's not on mute, but if in a situation where there was an ongoing smell of coffee in the neighborhood. It's obviously uh. Situation where that afterburner that we keep talking about is eliminating the odors, is not operating. There is uh, you know, cursory book on the, through the literature for the. Afterburner itself, there are fail codes. On the afterburner, so.
Is anybody else having a problem with the sound?
It was an echo in there.
And may, maybe Doctor Picard, I think you might need to put yours on mute. I think might be the issue.
Mister Haley, why don't you go through that last statement that you made? Do it again.
I think, sorry, in a real quick look. There we go. Okay, sorry about that. I was just stating that uh, in in a quick look at the literature on the uh, afterburner that we're looking to purchase, there's. Uh, identification of fail codes in the mechanics of the afterburner itself. That are on that display in that image uh, that we keep showing of the afterburner itself. That is basically how the mechanics of that uh, would be communicating to us. That the the machine's not operating. I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but um. I I guess I'm just basically stating that there are a number of ways in which it will be uh, obvious that that afterburner isn't operating. Um, and we certainly understand the sensitivity around that based on the, the, the testimony and the conversation tonight, so. Something we would be uh, mindful of, obviously.
And and just my, okay, alright, I'm sorry, continue.
Yeah, I think it's also important to recognize Doctor Picard's testimony where he talked about. These volatile organic compounds and CO2. And they're produced by the restaurants that I like to go to and we all like to go to and. They go directly out through a hood. Out, outside, they're they're vented out. They don't use afterburners. So we're not talking about really anything different here. Except the smell won't be of. Apple pies or eggs or steak, it's gonna be of coffee. This is really analogous, probably the closest analogy would be to a restaurant, the restaurants in town. And I could, if you'd like, we can send you literature. That talks about, from the NIOSH, that talk about how they investigate. These coffee roasters. And some of those that have been associated with coffee roasting with a cafe. And they found the most volatile organic compounds. Number one was the grinding operation. Where they're grinding beans in the, in the basement. That's where they found the most of the compounds. Second. Is when they're scooping them out of the bins, the plastic bins with the coffee, the roasted coffee beans. It's third is where they actually are doing the roasting operation. So we're, we're happy to provide those NIOSH reports. We actually talked. To the author of these NIOSH articles. That was cited in the correspondence provided to what we thought was provided to the board.
These three, these three items that you just listed are in the NIOSH reports and can, they can be given to the board. For review.
Well, just, just, okay, the. That NIOSH statement, I'm sure there are references to other studies. Honestly, without testimony though, I don't really see. You know, what the board is gonna do with them. If you're looking for that and the applicant is willing to provide it to you, then I don't know at that point, we need Doctor Picard to. You know, answer any questions you might have about that. So um.
Yeah, I I I guess. If there's still questions, I I would. Okay.
No, no, I just, excuse me, Donna, did you wanna say something?
I I'm gonna let Mister Hair finish and then, yes, I would like to.
It really is, what's being, gonna be produced will have less VOCs. Than the restaurants in town. And their vent hoods. I think that's pretty clear. They don't use afterburners. So, you know, and and I think Serge Picard could tell you his son has helped out at the coffee roasting operations in Munaki. So. They're not worried. They're so not worried about this that they'd let their family members be involved in this. So they they recognize what dangers there are. And how minimal and how negligible. And so they let their family members be involved in this. Because they're not worried. Um, and and so it's. It it's, I think it's important to put this in perspective. That the perfumes you put on you or colognes have VOCs. Sorry, I see two hands.
Chairman. Yes. I I'd like to let you, let the board members ask questions.
Yeah, as soon as Mister Harris, as soon as.
I'm done.
It says he's complete.
Yeah, but we, we've heard five times about perfume. Let's, let's get to some substantive questions.
Okay, Mister Hair, why don't you wrap it up and then we'll open it to the board for questions?
We're, we're done.
You're done?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, um, Donna, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I'd like to get a handle on how much coffee you are going to be roasting per week. Um, I'm looking at your um. Your variance rider. And so you're saying about, on average, fifteen five-pound bags to restaurants. Per week. So that's seventy-five pounds a week so far. Yes? Mister Haley?
Yes.
Or Mister Picard, okay, so that's seventy-five pounds a week. Now, how many pounds a week? For your facility on Nassau Street, will you be roasting?
Uh, so our business is, it's fairly volatile, but uh, we're, we basically put in the presentation here. In the arena of three hundred to five hundred pounds is what we anticipate when we have the new cafe.
For weeks.
So you're gonna roast three hundred to five hundred pounds per week. Of green beans at the roastery.
Correct.
And how long does that take? Five hundred and seventy-five pounds, how long would that take to do?
So each batch takes between eight and twelve minutes. It's, it's dependent on the roast level.
And how many batches to make five hundred pounds?
I'm sorry, can you, can you ask that again? I got, I I missed the first part.
I think Steve and I were both trying to ask it at the same time. Um, how many, you're saying? Let's take five hundred, you're saying up to five hundred pounds per week to start out with, will be roasted at this facility on Witherspoon Street. Um, and you're saying that each batch takes about ten minutes, I think you said?
Yeah, so eight to twelve minutes, yep.
Okay, so why don't we settle on ten, if that's okay? Um, just for math, how many batches? Are needed to make five hundred pounds?
Uh, sixteen batches.
So sixteen batches, so that's a hundred sixty minutes?
On average.
Per week? Okay, um, my other, my other question is, um. I'm confused about how often the raw beans are being transported. To the premises, I guess, but from the loading docks in Newark. Um, you have in your rider, um. That it will be in your variance ride, you say the van will come to the facility with raw beans. Once every three weeks. But now in your presentation, you're saying two to three times a year.
Correct.
So I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm talking about our current facility in Munaki when I say every three weeks, because we have a very limited uh. Amount of square feet there. So we, we can store uh, only so much green coffee. Uh, we intend to have more green coffee at our cafe. Which actually gives a visual uh, uh, effect. They're in uh, burlap sacks on. Um, and they'll be kind of stacked for visual appeal so that, um, in addition to serving as a uh. You know, a store for us, so that we don't have to go to the uh. You know, go to the uh, port to pick that up as frequently as we currently do, if that makes sense.
I'm not sure it does. Um, I think you're saying at present, the van comes to Munaki from the port every. Three weeks. And now you're saying because, so when you, if you open on Witherspoon to roast the coffee. The van is going to come from the port only two to three times a year?
That's correct. I'll bring in more, I'm gonna bring in more uh, unroasted coffee, yep. Three hundred Witherspoon, yep.
Okay, so how many bags are you gonna be storing at Witherspoon Street at any given time?
I'm sorry, I did do this math. Um, it's not fresh in my head, but what I'll say is that we, we put approximately ten to twelve. One hundred and. Thirty-pound bags on a pallet. Um, everything gets delivered on a, on a pallet. So uh. Again, I I'm sorry, I haven't done the math exactly, but my anticipate, the, the reason I said two to three times per year. Was that I was pretty certain that I could fit uh, sufficient amount of. Uh, raw, uncooked uh, coffee uh, in the three hundred Witherspoon location to accommodate. Uh, the volumes that we just talked about on the roasting side.
So if you've got ten to twelve in a pallet, how many pallets do you think you're gonna have there at a time? Or how many do you need to have there?
This, so uh, sorry, Serge did the mathematics, it's annual.
Is for. Four skis.
Yeah, so about four pallets. That would stay in inventory at three hundred Witherspoon at, at any given point in time to accommodate that two to three deliveries per year.
So that's about fifty, one hundred thirty-pound beds?
Yeah, fifty-seven to be exact.
Okay, um. If. I, I went by the facility today at three hundred Witherspoon and I saw a lot of construction. I gather that's through your facility?
That's correct, yep.
And are, do you currently have a takeout facility there?
No.
You don't, you don't have any?
Operating, like, serving cups of coffee right now, you're saying?
Right, at three hundred Witherspoon.
No, definitely not.
You did from the application, okay.
But they have approval to have a cafe there. Which is being.
Yeah, which, well, it is a cafe, so just to clarify, yeah, I think the word facility was used and. And certainly we've done construction. We're going to have a cafe for the public at this location, regardless of. What the decision is tonight, um, uh, around the, the roasting itself. We obviously have ways of. Serving uh, coffee and that's our primary and um, uh, intention with this.
You can use this property for a retail establishment, whether or not you do roasting there.
That's accurate. Uh, it certainly, uh, there's a reason why we're here tonight and we certainly want it to be a part of the experience and that is. You know, why we're, we're asking for this variance, uh, but, but yes.
Okay, that's all for right now, thanks.
Michael.
Now, if if someone else has questions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, George, did you have a question?
Probably to uh, Serge Picard. Um, it's my understanding that to maintain quality of green coffee has to be in a climate-controlled environment. Um, and so if you're gonna have three months' worth of an inventory or four months in your site. In, as, as I understand, in open view for um, partly decorative purposes. Aren't you gonna sort of have, by the end of that period, a fair amount of the coffee being degraded as green coffee?
That's actually a super good question and very technical for, I love to speak to this. Most coffee in the world is actually stored uh, more than six months in giant open-air ware, uh, warehouses. Either in uh, green coffee uh, burlap bags. And uh, there's actually one big warehouse that's not temperature-controlled in uh, New Jersey here and in. Uh, Texas, but most of it, if you go to Columbia, they're like acres that are just covered, open access. And they just try to protect for uh, fencing for any animals or vermin that could uh, come to it. So the answer is no. Uh, coffee can, green coffee, roasted coffee is very fragile. Uh, brittle also, but green coffee is uh, almost unbreakable. It can sustain freezing convertibles to extremely high temperatures. So. The environment in the coffee shop obviously is gonna be regulated, where we don't wanna make it uncomfortable for the, the customer base. So uh, it would be even better than what you have in uh, open-air. Type storage. A lot of uh, major, big commercial roasting facilities actually have what we call green silos. That are affixed to the outside of the building and are not temperature-controlled one bit, or if you need control.
Thanks.
Um, anyone else? Michael? Oh, I'm sorry. Michael, do you wanna?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, just a, a question going back to uh, what others were uh, asking about. You know, how do you know if, if uh, the machinery isn't, or the afterburner isn't working properly, i- it properly? Is there some kind of? External, um, like a, a, a third-party sensor or something like that? Because it sounds like you're, you're relying on the machine itself to tell you it's not working or, you know, something kind of subjective like. Uh, smell or, you know.
Well, so just for the record, the afterburner is there to uh, eliminate the potential smell or smoke. Or the, the visual that's coming out of the coffee roasting process. So that's the number one thing you're abating. So that's gonna be the number one thing that uh. Declares that it's not working or that it is working. So. There are sensors. Obviously, it has to attain its certain temperature that goes to optimal uh. After burning and uh, a little bit like. If you have a pool heater working with a, a full motor. If the pool motor stops, the heater is gonna have a failsafe system that's gonna turn it off automatically. Because that creates a risk, danger risk. You have the exact same thing that when the afterburner is linked to a coffee roaster. So they either work together for the, we just did the math, like uh, under five hours that we're roasting per week. Or they don't, they gotta be on or off. Unless there's some mechanical or physical override, they, they work in tandem.
Okay, I mean, I guess I, I uh. Okay, I mean, I guess, I, uh, was thinking about some external kind of sensor, but you're saying that that's.
So there's shaft, there's internal sensors, but there's also exactly like, uh, same thing for the venting system for a pool heater. The security, you've got internal or, uh, a burner for or manifold, you'll have the sensors at the flame where it detects the presence of the flame, optical or not, temperature or not. And then you have one at the exhaust of any outside pool heater that will detect if there's excess heat coming out or enough heat coming out, and it's gonna be the self, the, the full self, uh, safe method to shut everything down if the two previous sensors don't work. So yes, there are more than one sensor and there's certainly one at the exhaust also, and there are multiple sensors. This is a calibrated machine that, uh, they go for, they start at twenty-five thousand dollars, so you'd expect the, the level of technology to be associated with it. It's not just, uh, a flame that turns on and you hope for the best, it's regulated, uh, warranted, supplied equipment by major US manufacturers.
Michael.
Okay, um, on this topic, uh, I believe the afterburner is not a, a silent machine, so if it stops working altogether, would someone on site would notice that, I, I would think, but can you, is that correct?
The, same as the coffee roasting, they're pushing air, so you have a fan and uh, you'll hear gas going through a pipe to a barbecue, so yes, you're very correct on that.
Okay, um, I was looking at your rider, I have a couple questions, um, probably the one substantive, and I could read it if you don't have it at your fingertips. You say, the applicant understands that roasting beans for use in making and selling coffee at the property is not a prohibited use. I mean, it's not a permitted use, are we just doing semantics? How can you say it's not a prohibitive use, roasting beans?
Well, it's not in the regulations as there are specific prohibited uses and it's not listed as one of them.
Okay, it's not a specific prohibitive, but it is considered manufacturing, which is a prohibitive use, is that what you meant?
Yeah, well, the regulation, yeah, 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 it's, it's akin to baking.
Yeah.
Food product.
It's a prohibitive use, not specifically named, it's manufactured. Okay, um, and, and a number of places you, you refer to, and I think it's just semantics anyway, cuz not expanding the micro roasting room, you're not expanding a brew, a brewing room. Right now you don't have a roasting room or permission. So that may be just semantics. I have a question on one of your positive proofs, you talk about hiring local, uh, people. How many people do you intend, or do you think, I mean, that roasting will require or allow you to hire?
So the roasting itself would probably be a, a single full-time employee for everything that goes around, uh, roasting, which is choosing the coffee, the beans that we're actually going to roast through to how we market those, those beans, so I would anticipate as it relates specifically to roasting, um, a full-time hire, we employ about, at any given time, ten part-time employees at our cafe on Twenty Nassau Street. This is, uh, a larger space, cafe space and CD space, so I would anticipate that we're going to have at least that many likely, uh, in the arena of five additional hard-time, um, employees.
Okay, um, and that's well and good. Yeah, happy to hear that, um, but, you know, the, the ten, and I'm thinking out loud, you would have anyway for the cafe, the roasting adds one person. Cuz as I say, you're using that as one of your positive proofs.
Yeah, a full-time, uh, person, so, uh, that, we, we don't have many of those, so I, I do see it as a, a significant role.
And, and I see it as a positive, I, I was just trying to give how many people and you've told me. It's not that many. And I, I did understand where the earlier question about, uh, visits to the site inbound because the, the, the rider is confusing. It leads you to believe you're talking about the Witherspoon site and you're saying that the three times, um, every three weeks, you weren't pertaining to the Witherspoon site. But that's.
Apologies, I think that was, it's the replacement of that, and I, yeah, I apologize for the non-clarity around that.
Yeah, um, let's see. I may not have any more questions. Cuz a lot of mine were on the VOCs. Just one second, Steve. Now that's, uh, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you, uh, any other board members have any questions? Yes, Donna.
I have a quick question, Mr. Hilly, what about the, um, the employee who will do the roasting, will you start out using the employee who did this in Munaki if you're closing down Munaki?
Uh, will not, no, this will be a local hire, uh, the, um, uh, work that's done in Munaki is, uh, not a current employee of ours, it's, uh, somebody that we consult with basically.
Thanks.
Um, any other board members have any questions? Okay, so, um, hearing no more questions from the board. We will, there are members of the audience who'd like to ask questions before we do that. Uh, Mr. Hare, do you want to summarize or add anything before we open it up to public comment?
I, I don't think I need to, I think I've probably said more than enough. And I think, you know, you've heard from Jonathan and Serge and, and Dr. Picard, so I, I don't know that I can add anything more.
Okay, Karen, do you have any questions? Okay, and Derek, are you okay? Derek?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions before we open it up? No more questions before we open it up to public comment?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, um, we'll now go into the, uh, public comment phase of the hearing, um, Claudia, do we have any, uh, people who've indicated they'd like to speak?
Yes.
Do you know how many approximately?
Um, the hands are just going up now, so I'm moving everybody over.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're going to open this up to the public. Just a couple of things, if, if anybody can comment, uh, you have to identify yourself and be sworn in, and we just ask that you, that you don't repeat questions that others have asked and have been answered. You can, you can, if you agree with another person's testimony, just very simply say, I agree with so-and-so's testimony, we're just gonna try to move this on because we have a number of people who would like to speak. If possible, I'd like to limit it initially to five minutes per person, so, um, let's start. Okay, Karen?
One procedural question. Mr. Leach, two ninety-three Witherspoon, he did submit, um, so we say a lengthy position paper, which was posted, I do believe the board has seen that. I don't know if you perhaps wanna start with him only because it may be that his comments may encompass many other people's comments, in which case, uh, it may be easier for people to either indicate, you know, I agree.
Okay, is he, is he here right now?
I, well, I see. I see Mrs. Leach, I see. We hear you, Mr. Leach, we just can't see you.
Okay, I don't know how to turn the camera on. Really, I'm in, using my wife's computer.
Well, maybe we can help you with that because I, I think you have, it appears you've got a lot of comments to make and we really do wanna be able to see you, so.
What do I do, Beverly?
Can anybody?
Usually it shows up in the lower left-hand corner. You know? You run your mouse over it, maybe that'll.
Right, right click on, right click on the screen.
Okay.
And then you right click, then you, right click anywhere on the screen. And then you'll see a menu box will come up.
Just a minute. Okay, let's try that, okay, nothing comes up. Let's see, I don't know what to say. I know, nothing, nothing here, the arrow, well, let's see if that pops up something. Select a speaker, this is all audio, nothing but audio. Okay, well.
You, you don't see any blue box or anything, if you move your cursor around, do you see?
I see here, join as panelist, I can click on that maybe.
Claudia?
Yes, please, click on that.
Okay, do that.
Is the public test fine yet?
Why do we do this? Claudia, you're trying to help.
Trying to get support on Twitter.
Okay, do we have, we just need you now to put.
I appreciate the chance to speak to you all, uh, I spoke to.
Hey, wait a minute, we're having an echo, I don't know where that's coming from, um. Uh, Mr. Leach, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
All right, and you reside at two ninety-three Witherspoon, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and you did submit, and it's the best thing is to call it a position paper. In, and it also has a series of questions that you hope the board will.
Right, right.
From the board's perspective, if you want us to move this into, uh, make it an exhibit in this hearing, I, I think it would be appropriate board members to let Mr. Leach at least run through it, summarize, not read it, but simply explain what, what he's trying to convey to you.
Okay, thank you, I've actually tried it, Mr. Bridger's suggestion to reduce this to a three minutes. And, uh, I'm delighted to have a couple of more minutes. What I've done since the last meeting is just quite a lot of library, online and in-person research with coffee roasters in this area. And, uh, and the co, visited all the coffee shops, just tried to find out what's going on here. Because I'm terrified as someone who lives two hundred yards from the chimney that will be coming out of this roasting facility that I'm going to smell coffee roasting. And coffee roasting is not the same thing as coffee. Uh, I've found Dr. Picard's testimony very informative, uh, and he was talking about the aroma of coffee, well, the aroma of coffee is what's left after the aroma of coffee roasting. And the best description that I've heard of the aroma of coffee roasting, which is essentially the controlled burning of these coffee beans, was it smells like burned microwave popcorn. And, uh, you know, we've probably all done that once, but I guarantee none of us have done it twice, it smells so bad. And, uh, I was pleased to hear in this testimony tonight that we, uh, if we smell something, then there's something wrong because it is being positive that the afterburner will take care of the smell, it will not exist. Hope that would be right, but I don't think it would be. And the reason I don't think it would be is the literature from the Clean Stream Afterburner Company talks about reducing smoke and odor and VOC and CO. It does not talk about removing it when the original application said ninety up to, it said, quote, up to ninety percent of the smells will be removed. Uh, that is describing a type of afterburner called a catalytic afterburner that burns at about eight hundred and fifty degrees, which was the testimony of the applicant last month. I noticed the goalposts are moving and now we're hearing about uh, ninety-nine percent or ninety-five percent removal. And I, I don't know, I'm wr, writing my comments to the application, which was up to ninety percent removed, which is another way of saying at least ten percent of the output will not be removed. It will come into the air and it will blow, if it blows from a strong north wind, it'll go south into Witherspoon, Jackson. If it blows the other way, it'll go over Community Park School and Community Park Pool, west to Race Street, east to Jefferson, that's a one-quarter mile radius around the chimney. And, you know, I don't know if it, how much or how bad it would be, but it will certainly be something. So that's my worry, I was pleased to hear cuz I would love to have their coffee shop across the street, it's just the roasting is the problem, and if the coffee shop can exist without the roasting, that's a great solution, in my opinion. And so what I'd like to do is just to make it fast and quick, read through what I have summarized from my thirty-five questions and my report on what I discovered as I've visited these coffee roasters around. But it's emissions, we're talking about emissions like burned microwave popcorn was, I, if, I don't know who smelled coffee roasting affluent as a, or air affluent, I guess you'd say, but it's not the same thing as brewed coffee. That eight hundred fifty degrees, which was referred to at the last meeting, is an up to ninety percent removal, that's the catalytic. There's another thing called a thermal, uh, afterburner that burns at fourteen hundred degrees, much more expensive and much more likely to truly, as there's positing tonight, vaporize everything. But the application has promised up to ninety percent, and I think, I don't know, what you, what you go to as the plan. Why is that even a problem if there's ten percent coming out into the air? And it turns out, much to my surprise really, that the human olfactory system, our nose, is very, very sensitive, it's a great organ for offense, we can find food when we smell something or we can sense danger if we smell something. The nose registers at ten parts per billion, that's virtually nothing. And once triggered in our brain from the nose, the signal goes to the brain, the brain says, a smell, I smell this. It doesn't care how much got left out, it only cares about what it smelled. And.
Yes, five minutes, can you try to sum it up?
Yep, I'll sum it up.
Oh, it's great.
The uh anyway, the other thing, it's troubling tonight to me is that last week, the roasting time proposed was two point five hours. Tonight it was three to five and five to seven, it's growing. And that's the worry we have, that this smell that might be just a hundred sixty minutes an hour can grow. So I say to you that I don't know what to believe is going to happen, and I'm fearful, and I thank you.
Okay.
Just one more question there. Mr. Leach indicated he has thirty-five questions that he has raised.
Looks like Michael may have checked out.
I, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Uh, well, Mr. Leach, what I was asking the board, is there about thirty-five questions that you've raised in your um correspondence or position statement? Does the board want to address any of them, or how, how do you want to approach that?
Well, I mean, unless, unless somebody was taking detailed notes, I made a few notes, but I didn't come close to thirty-five items needed to be addressed.
Well. He's got them listed, so I guess the question is um some may have been addressed already during the hearing. I'm, I'm asking because I know we have other people who want to comment, and it's really a procedural question. You want to come back to that later, or?
Do, has this been, has this memo been formally submitted to the board? Is it on the site?
Yes. It is on the website. And before we, you know, formally put it into the record, my thought had been that you know, if there are questions the board wants to address, there are quite a few. Some may be, some may be a little repetitive.
Where, where is Karen, where is the, the memo in the website? Or Claudia?
Claudia has it posted, if you look under zoning board applications.
Is it objectors exhibit?
That's it.
That's it, okay. All right.
I, I have a question now.
Yes, Michael.
Even though it's on the website, was it sent to the board members individually?
I'd have to ask Claudia that.
I, I didn't see it. And I don't check the website because I get a package.
Okay.
And if it wasn't a package, I will never see it.
Well, Claudia, she did email it to everyone too, just, you know, conscious of the fact that everybody may not be.
Yeah, can I note that it was not sent to the applicant?
Okay.
Um, so I, I feel like we're sort of being a bit sandbagged here, uh, not by the board or you, but um it's just all of a sudden we have thirty-five questions.
Yeah, honestly, a, a lot of them are, should we say, a restatement of a point that Mr. Leach is trying to make. And, and you know, through the Zoom process, the board's practice has been to post everything on its zoning application website. That's been its method of communicating, to say, well, everything is put out there publicly. So um either, either you want to give Mr. Leach a few more minutes? You can ask him if there are some key questions in here that he wants to raise. I think he may have raised some of them already in the statements he made. And then, you know, the board can move on to other people who may want to come. So it seems that a lot of these are, are a restatement of the same issue, which is the, having a manufacturing use in a residential zone. What about this ten percent of emissions that may not be addressed by the afterburner?
I have the memo in front of me, Karen, and it's lengthy, several pages.
Again, I, I think Mr. Leach has summarized what he was trying to convey to you in this letter. And so I was really asking just procedurally, what's the question? Or what process do you want to follow with these questions?
Well, I think the applicant needs a chance to review the memo and decide how he wants to respond.
All right.
Quite frankly, wait, hang, excuse me, quite frankly, I don't know if that can be done this evening. We can, we can move on to the next person uh and come back to this, but I don't know. I don't know, you know, as you said before, this, this memo may have addressed questions that others were going to ask also. So I think, I think.
How, how about we do this? We have other people who are here tonight and they want to make a comment. Why don't we let them comment? Uh, in the meantime, Mr. Hare maybe can confer with his client off-screen here and decide would they like to proceed tonight? Would they like this to get carried so that they can review this more carefully, um, so that they feel they are being fully responsive? And that way, at least if we have other people tonight, let them.
Sure, let's do that, let's, let's move on, that's fine. Mr. Hare, is that okay with you?
Uh, yeah, I, I, we, we'd like to carry on and let as many people have the opportunity to speak because last month, you know, granted, you let us start late, and we appreciate that, but a lot of people came to support us, and they didn't get the opportunity there here again, so they, they'd like to have the opportunity to.
Okay.
And we.
That's fine, so, so you have the memo, you can look at it while we're going on and talking.
So.
Members of you, members of your team will listen to some other questions while the people are presenting.
Okay, and will, will the memo be sent to me, I guess is my question.
It's on the website.
Okay, we're getting kind of like echoes, I'm not sure what's going on, but um.
Uh, the memo, the memo is on the website, under Witherspoon Street, and it's, it's uh it's noted as a question. So.
So.
All right, so it's noted as a question, uh, it's a, what was it, was it, Claudia, in your memo, in your note? Upon, I can't get back to it on my screen, but is it?
It's, I believe it's, there are a number of documents that are listed, they are all the applicant's documents, and then I think there's one line right there, and it says, objector.
Yeah, objector, so that's, that's where it's.
Letter or objector memo, something like that.
Exhibit zero one.
You'll, you'll see it right away once you log on.
Okay, Mr. Hare, it's on the website under objectors memo. And you can bring it up and review it. So if it's okay with you, while you and your team are looking at that, we will go on to the next person who'd like to speak, and other members of your team can listen in on that. Is that all right?
Yeah, we, we can accept that, for sure.
Okay, all right, so Claudia, Karen?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna move, we're going to move to the next, the next speaker.
Looking to swear somebody in here, so who should I swear?
Karen, Karen, Claudia, can you let someone in?
Is that Mr. Petrecca?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Petrecca, could you give us your address, please?
Sure, I live at forty-six Henry Avenue.
All righty, and do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll make it short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Leach, I agree a hundred percent with everything you said. Um, I think the fact that a school abuts right next to this place is concerning. Um, I fully support the coffee shop, I love coffee. I can tell you personally from walking by a very small coffee shop near my work that um the smell is, uh, to compare coffee with roasting coffee are completely two different things. Um, and frankly, if, if I'm out on my porch and I smell coffee and the afterburner is working, then what's my recourse? And I guess that's, that, that's what I have to say about um how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Claudia, can you let the next person in?
Who's the next person?
Is that Mr. Weiss?
Hi, yeah, if I'm allowed to speak at now.
Okay, Mr. Weiss, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, my name is Joseph Weiss, I live at seventy Lee Avenue, I've lived there for thirty, a little over thirty years now.
I'm sorry, say that again, seventy?
Lee Avenue.
Lee Avenue. All right, and you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I have three points to make. Um, as I mentioned, I live on Lee Avenue, I'm in the neighborhood. Uh, in principle, I welcome a co- coffee shop in my neighborhood, I think that's, that's a wonderful addition. But I do have real problems with the uh having a roasting facility in, in the neighborhood. Um, my three points really are, first of all, I, I, I feel it's fair to point out that with all due respect to Dr. Picard, he has a vested interest in the success of this application, given that he is the father of the applicant or one of the applicants. And I feel that should be noted because from my point of view, that indicates some, some bias in his testimony. And I think you can always get experts to testify to one aspect or another for, for both sides. And the town doesn't really have the advantage of hiring their own expert in this. So I, I feel that the board should really view Dr. Picard's testimony with, with a little bit of circumspect. My second point is the applicant is asking for a nice-to-have, uh, as they say, an artisanal amenity to a coffee facility that in fact they've already, they already are invested in and is already going to be built. So it, it, it's, I don't see the hardship here, I don't see the inherent need of having to add a roasting facility on top of this, other than it's a nice, it's a nicer experience for their customer base. And my third and last point, and I don't feel that this has been adequately addressed at all in the applicant's testimony, is that Community Park School, a school that has over three hundred very young children attending on a daily basis, there's playgrounds there, is less than fifty yards from this facility. And machines fail, we know that. And who are, is the board willing to roll the dice to allow this facility to proceed? And somewhere down the road, the, the uh, the um, the, the device that is supposed to remove most of the noxious gases fails? We'll only know that when, when there's an extreme odor. And what if a child becomes sick from that? Are you willing to accept that risk? And I really sincerely hope that you are not. This is a very bad idea, primarily, primarily because it is less than fifty yards from a K through five school in Princeton. Which, by the way, my kids all attended, it's a wonderful institution, and I feel that anything that might in the slightest, has the slightest chance of degrading that institution or the safety of the children should be out of hand rejected. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, can you uh allow the next applicant to speak? Or the next uh person in the public to speak? Who would that be? That Mr., I'll pick somebody.
I'll be happy to go. Zakarin, yes, do you hear me?
Karen, could you give us your address, please?
I'm at two ninety Witherspoon Street.
All righty, and we'll swear, you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, I've heard somebody on Lee Street, I've heard somebody two hundred yards away, I am fifty feet away from the facility. Okay? And I welcome you with open arms to the community. And you seem to be all looking to find a way for them not to do business in Princeton. How about we look about a way for them to do business in Princeton? Has anyone considered possibly that they could do their roasting at night? When there's nobody at school, when there's nobody awake, when there's nobody outside to offend them, if in fact there were any offensive smell from it, which we've been told that there would not be? By the way, I don't know whether or not Mr. Leach or Mr. Weiss have ever been in small business themselves, or if they are professionals and not small businessmen, and don't know what it takes to run a company like this and to offer jobs to people in the community, which is what this facility is trying to do. Um, also, while we're at it, I don't know if any of you have pets who walk their dogs outside, who poop on our streets. Do we stop you? We say, no, just put it in a bag and put it away in your garbage. That's pretty noxious also. Why don't we outlaw dogs? You know, this is really ridiculous. I spent my youth camping out around Seabrook, New Hampshire, when they were building a nuclear facility there. Guess what? They still built it. Nobody's dead from it. This is coffee, my friends, this is coffee beans, five hours to six hours a week. And you want to deny this person the opportunity to run a business successfully that might employ people in Princeton? Think about it, think about it real carefully. I worked at Mistral, they had an open barbecue in the backyard. I worked at the cigar store in town, they had very small air filters in the ceiling. This is the best you can do? Deny somebody roasting coffee who's putting in every possibility that they are, they can prevent any noxious odors coming out? This is the best you can do. Mr. Cohen, by the way, I noticed we were drinking a beverage the entire meeting, what was that?
It was tea.
It was tea. I bet they'll serve that there, if you ask nicely. That's all I have, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Okay, um, Karen, I think uh looks like at least on my screen, how about we just take it, the way it appears, Will Price?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Price, you gotta turn your, there you go, okay.
I think I got it.
Rice, could you give us your address, please?
Uh, eleven Birch Avenue.
All righty, and we will swear, you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, great, I'll try to be brief. Um, uh, we are uh about as close to, as Mr. Zachary uh to the proposed project. We're immediately behind the property, um, and recently Jonathan Haley invited us to meet and ask questions about the new coffee shop. Um, and we really do appreciate this outreach from Sacred, um, and from the property owner who was there at the time. And we admire their passion for coffee and their desire to share, share this passion with the community. Um, so side note, this is how I learned of the project. With notifications being a little bit untimely here, but that's a separate issue. Um, I also really appreciate the testimony and biochemistry presentation by Dr. Picard, I'm a little bit. I'm a little bit unsure that the lessons drawn by the applicant were very helpful. Um, there are hundreds of VOCs, some benign, like cooking with butter in moderation, but others are toxic, like benzene, toluene, and aldehydes. The latter being among compounds associated with coffee roasting and irritants that are at the very least unhealthy to breathe. Um, in general, the thought of a coffee shop outside our back door is very welcome. I mean, I agree with that. I would love, you know, I I sacred is is a beautiful cafe. Um, and it'd be great to have it nearby. Um, I'm also drinking tea right now, but I do enjoy coffee too. Um, uh, but not a roastery. And I I know this is um, I mean, part of the passion of the project proponents. I really dislike having to uh, in uh, oppose their vision for the roastery. Uh, but really, there is enough in the literature, including from the CDC, explaining the dangers of fumes generated by coffee roasting, even fumes you can't smell. And and we don't want to live, even occasionally, with an acrid smell of roasting coffee in our yard and in our house. I mean, we are right behind the proposed site. Our bedrooms and air intakes are at the same height and less than a hundred feet away. In Naples, Florida, the example that was shared, uh, the nearest resident is over four hundred feet uh, from their facility. And it's, you know, out, uh, the residence, it's it's outside of that business park zone where they're located. Uh, Dr. Picard testified that airborne compounds would dissipate after a block. Well, we are within a block and so is the school. Um, I understand that Sacred will be installing afterburners. It's kind of crazy that we've spent so much time discussing the biochemistry of afterburners in order to try to get an currently unpermitted use, an industrial use into this residential zone, or I guess into the business district, but it it it, you know, doesn't necessarily eliminate particulates and odors. And in his presentation uh, last week, the council asserted there'd be no ill effects from breathing directly from the, from the smokestack. I I, my understanding is that this would still be unhealthy and is definitely not recommended. And that's one of my concerns is that some of the presentation testimony and even the scale of the operation is different, different between the two presentations. Um, I understand that Sacred, uh, well, I'll 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 wrap up here. But uh, I I just, we're not confident that our air quality will not be impaired now or several years from now. If granted, the variance allows for larger scale, not just for Sacred shops, but for other retailers and perhaps beyond. In our experience living here, promises, plans, and intentions change over time. In this case, there is no assurance that impacts air quality will prove minimal and benign over time, and the grounds for enforcement and potential revocation. What would those, what would those grounds be if necessary? I I, there doesn't seem to be a provision for that in the variance request. Their proposed location for the coffee roaster is adjacent to a school, a health clinic, and many properties, including our own. And it, I think it's important to realize too that the township has been recently changing boundaries and ordinances to add people, traffic, restaurants, retail, and all kinds of fumes and noise to this neighborhood, adding to unresolved legacies like municipal vehicles, buried coal, dumped coal. Uh, in uh, while asserting that these new projects are trade-offs that existing residents had must make to live here. We're owners who built here and love the neighborhood and love the neighbors. And I don't think this, the township should necessarily be dictating that this is a trade-off that we now have to make. We think that Sacred's cafe could be a wonderful addition to our neighborhood. We really dislike having to oppose their vision. Uh, but I'm sure they'll have plenty of customers from around town without a roastery. I mean, based on the scale that was shared, I mean, how many other customers will actually experience seeing and smelling roasting? But uh, personally, we will not, I mean, we don't need to witness our beans roasted artisanally. I mean, this can be done elsewhere, like for example, the industrial park where Small World has decided to roast their beans for the same reasons. And I guess finally, it just, this begs the question of why this is being entertained? Why would we run the risk of impairing air quality for an artisanal lecture experience, especially here in this neighborhood with houses and a school and a school close by? All the reasons proponents have cited to be located there have to do with a coffee shop, not a roastery. Unnecessarily adding new emission sources that have the potential to impair air quality and have in other settings around the country should not be permitted. But thank you so much for the chance to comment on proposed variants. I really do wish the proponent, proponents good fortune with with the development of a cafe nearby, which would be wonderful. Thank you.
Well, okay, um, I guess it's Jeff Fury. Am I pronouncing that properly?
Yes, you are.
Could you give us your address, please? You're muted. We need, we need to mute. There you go.
Jeff Fury, three nineteen Witherspoon Street.
Alrighty, and we'll just swear you in.
And thirteen feet from the property.
Do you swear or affirm, sir, any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. Um, I was gonna hit on many points that Owen Will uh, did speak about. Hopefully we get to hear Peter go. But um, alright, I'm a commercial real estate broker. Um, uh, I focus in on industrial and office properties. I have done quite a few food processing plants. This is food processing, the roastery. That's how the world looks at it. And other towns would look at it also. And they would basically, uh, that use should be done exactly what Will told, said about small world. Put it into a area that is properly zoned for it, not next to a school. I can tell you. Not in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And so you know, what type of things I've done? Uh, I'm saying Miss Chocolate Chip Cookies, Hostess, uh, Wonder Bread Facility. I did a hundred thousand square foot vegan food processing plant. I do this. I've done chemical plants and uh, where I place them. And the whole thing is zoning, zoning. They don't put it next to residential, not next to a school. The chemical plant was incredible. The company was, which uh, EPA said a half, a quarter of a mile. They made sure nothing was around them for a mile. You know, think about that. And uh, they had some very dangerous chem- but anyway, but that's not the point. You got children, like they say, three hundred. How many have asthma? They say that this is the big thing. Alright? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I guess next is Ron Menopace. Is that, I hope I got that right?
Got it.
Okay.
Um, could you give us your address, please?
Uh, thirty-four Heather Lane.
And I don't know if that's your wife with you. Does she want to testify as well?
No, alright, I guess it's just me.
Let me um, swear you in. Do you swear for your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Alright, so uh, thank you to Derek. Herman Cohen, the rest of the zoning board, as well as, I should say, not only do I live at uh, thirty-four Heather Lane with our four children and my wife, uh, we also, full disclosure, own Homestead Princeton. So if we're going to have a contest with doctor, with Mr. Zakarin, Mr. Price, and Mr. Fury, I think we are closest to this new proposed site, as we are tangential to the the proposed roastery. Uh, we have a home goods business. We've been in business for about ten years. Moved to three hundred Witherspoon about two and a half years ago. Um, great neighborhood. It's great to see so many of our neighbors here on the call. Um, Mr. Weiss, I don't know if we've ever met, but you know, hopefully we will in the future. To um, to Mr. Zakarin's point, uh, you know, running a small business is extraordinarily difficult. And the last three years have made it even more difficult. And I think what Sacred is doing and what the board has the opportunity to do is to approve a very unique experience that benefits not only the residents of Princeton, but will establish Princeton as like an innovative place, encouraging tourism, bringing people into town. And I know this is, um, you know, we were talking about creating jobs. Um, there was one question by Mr. Floyd about hiring and hiring one roaster. Uh, as as a business that would benefit from a roastery, from people coming from out of town, we could potentially be adding jobs as well. It benefits not only Sacred, but it benefits all of the businesses that are within a stone's throw of this interesting uh, concept. Right now, it does feel that the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood does not have the same amenities as some of the other um, uh, neighborhoods, you know, the 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 CBD Jug Town Shopping Center. You could all walk to coffee. I do agree with all of our neighbors. It would be a welcome uh, addition to the neighborhood. Uh, I do think that roasting, uh, and I appreciate Dr. Picard talking about posing no detrimental effects, um, undetectable aroma and eliminating VOCs. Uh, I think we need to listen to the experts, the the people that have PhDs in food science, uh, and their expertise on this. Uh, to to another couple of points, you know, that's um, Small World does roast in Rocky Hill. There really is no, nothing stopping Sacred from doing the same, going to Rocky Hill or going to Skilman and bringing this unique experience to another town. And thereby um, bring financial and experiential benefits to other communities other than Princeton. I think we have a really good opportunity to encourage people to come to town, to spend their money into town, into our town and and to to visit our our wonderful uh, neighborhood. So as a resident, as a business owner, as a neighbor, I encourage the board to uh, to approve the uh, the roastery. And uh, again, thank you for all the neighbors. Um, it's really nice to see everybody on the call and hopefully we'll see you around town.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe the next person would be Walt Makowski. I hope I got that right. Mr. Makowski, if you would make yourself visible and, okay, at least we can, can we see you?
Start video. Here we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Makowski, could you give us your address, please?
Sure, it's fourteen Birch Avenue.
Alrighty, and then we'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my neighbor approached me and said, when we got the notice, uh, we should go visit a roastery, see what it's like. So we did. Uh, we went to Rocky Hill and uh, we spent about a half hour, forty-five minutes at that facility and uh, learned a great deal. Um, and I'm glad we did because uh, the one thing we learned is that you'll know if it's working kind of sort of correctly, if it smells bad. So that the 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 so-called afterburner, in this case, it was a thermal burner, uh, cooks the coffee at twelve, fifteen hundred degrees for a period of time before it releases. The um, the odor is, yeah, burnt popcorn. That's exactly what it smells like. It doesn't smell like coffee at all. It's not, not a great smell. It's not particularly a pleasant one. So it, and I, the uh, also that, you know, they they sort of confirmed what the one piece of testimony is, is that it doesn't get rid of everything. It gets rid of a lot. The reason you, the reason you do the thermal burning is to burn off the the uh, the, you know, the bad hydrocarbons. Uh, but yeah, no, it doesn't, doesn't take away the carbon monoxide. It doesn't take away all the uh, that. The the, the big, the big advantage is that there's not a lot of visible smoke. Um, so yeah, if you if you see smoke, you know, it's not working correctly. But and they also said, and from their experience, and they've done this a couple of times. Once they did it in in a residential neighborhood, and it didn't work out well at all, and that's the reason they put it in Rocky Hill. Uh, their experience and their measurements is the plume of odor of this uh, bad popcorn, burnt popcorn is about a tenth of a mile, about five hundred feet. So as somebody said, it's close to the school, the school, and that whole row of operable windows along that is about two hundred and ten feet away. Uh, this, the, based on a tenth of a mile, it'll reach Lee Avenue. It'll certainly reach Uh, Witherspoon. Um, so I, that is just, you know, what we sort of learned. So it it's not a warm and fuzzy feeling to say that, you know, it it's working pretty well if it smells bad. Uh, the only other thing I might offer is, and I know everybody's talked about the school, uh, the elementary school, the only thing I I would put onto there, and this is from experience doing a lot of schoolwork and dealing with topics like lead. Um, young kids, really young kids, six, seven, eight years old, are many, many times more sensitive to chemicals and other bad things than old people like me. Um, so I, I don't think it's a good idea, just from the selfish liability to um, introduce, you know, something, yeah, that's, you know, it's it's ninety percent effective, maybe ninety-five percent. But it's, it's only two hundred feet away, and that plume, based on at least the facility in Rocky Hill, is um, about a tenth of a mile, uh, five hundred feet. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, um, my plus, I believe Peter Goble.
Uh, yes, what do I have to do?
Oh, Mr. Goble, could you give us your address, please?
Yeah, it says uh, three seventeen Witherspoon.
Alrighty, and we were gonna swear you in now. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'll make this very quick because my neighbors have really spoken um, and spoken well and said much more than I could add to this. But I do agree, I think it's a risk that we don't need to take. I really appreciate the business owners and what they're trying to do. That's been said, and it sounds like it would be a wonderful establishment and the cafe itself. It's a great idea, but it does, the roastery does not have to be there. And I'm thinking of the children who are right across the street from me and I see every morning. And why do we have to add more environmental burden to them for basically no reason? So that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Claudia, I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any? I see names I don't recognize on the screen, but I don't see anybody who wants to speak. Okay, so there are no.
Well, Ronnie, Mr. Mulroni, you want to speak?
Yeah, then, sir, oh, there you go. Alright, Mr. Mr. Mulroni, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, I'm at thirty-two Birch Avenue, Princeton.
Alrighty, and sir, we will just ask you, what swear you in? Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I just like to second what what all of my neighbors have said so far. I don't want to repeat the the um, the, what they've said. Um, but one point I'd like to add, according to the FDA, uh, inhaling these compounds have have been proven to be toxic. These compounds attack the smallest, the tiniest airways in the lungs. And as the body tries to repair them, they uh, cause s- scar tissue to to form, and it builds up and it blocks the airways. And the damage is irreversible. Um, so that's, that's my concern. I I live basically right across the street from the backyard where this is gonna be um, functioning. And the last thing I'd like to leave is, I think the board needs to get its own medical expert and not re- not not rely on the testimony that we got from um, the doctor today, because he's obviously got a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just a procedural issue, Karen, Derek, board members. We have two other hearings tonight. It's uh, it's ten twenty-five. Ten twenty-six. Uh, we typically don't start any new hearings before ten thirty, and I don't think we're. Ready to finish this one yet, so I would say uh, it's probably pretty safe to say that. Both two twenty, uh, two eighty-three Prospect and six oh one Lake will be carried to the next hearing.
Okay, well. Chairman Cohen, we can't carry it until we take jurisdiction of each of them, and what that would involve is um. Just calling each application right now, I can advise you that the noticing for both of them is in order. The board does have jurisdiction. Um, to hear them tonight, but for each one, we would need to um. Advise the public when, uh, as to a firm hearing date, because otherwise the applicant would need to re-notice.
All right, why don't I do this? We'll just, can we just uh, pause? The Witherspoon application for a moment, and then read in the two case numbers and addresses and uh. Verify proper noticing and take jurisdiction then?
Yeah. Mister here, I don't know if you're uh, in conference with your client. Do you have a problem with that?
No, we don't. We, we would like to uh, proceed tonight on ours.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so. So we'll go, just, we're gonna pause. Pause um, case file number Z twenty-two, two seventy, which is three hundred Witherspoon Street for several moments, and we're going to. Uh, look at or discuss case Z twenty-two dash two fifty-six. Which is two eighty-three Prospect Block fifty-six point oh six. Lot one hundred in the R two zone formerly in the borough. Uh, Karen, are the notices in order?
The notices are in order. The board has jurisdiction over the application, and I think the applicant is here. Um.
I am.
Okay, um.
Can I understand what's happening? Are, are you proposing now to defer this for another month?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
That's what the board is proposing because the application before you um, is still not.
I, I have been here since seven thirty. I know what's happening with the application before you. Can I just, with respect, we submitted our application back in August. Initially. And it's not a complicated application.
Uh, I'm, and you might be right, but we have to hear it. But we've still, we have not finished three hundred Witherspoon yet. It's, it's ten thirty. And uh, we typically are not required to start any new applications after ten thirty, and we only go till eleven o'clock. So. We can, we can try to get it done tonight. We have to see if three hundred Witherspoon will complete.
Um, I would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, okay, so we're going, if you wanna, you, you're more than welcome to wait. We'll try it. But we will, we will end the hearing at eleven o'clock. All right. So we're going to just wait for a second. Now we're going to look at case Z twenty-three dash three thirty-five. Six oh one Lake Drive, block eighty, it looks like eighty-eight oh one, lot eleven in the R five zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
They are. The board has jurisdiction over the application.
Okay, um, if there are, is a representative of six oh one Lake here tonight, um, can you just identify yourself?
Is that me or?
Okay.
Good evening, Chris, are here.
Yeah, okay, Chris, it looks like we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to get to it tonight. Um, we're gonna go in and carry it. I mean, you're more than welcome to stay here and wait, but it's very unlikely it's gonna happen. Uh, Derek, when would be the next time we would hear, potentially hear Lake? And while we're discussing prospect, if we don't finish tonight.
April nineteen.
April nineteen? Okay, for both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll.
So anybody, an- anybody in the audience who uh, is listening or is attending because they're interested in six oh one Lake. Uh, will not be, there will be no new notices going out, um, and the board. Uh, will hear that application six oh one Lake at their meeting on April nineteen.
Okay, and we are still going to try, although I doubt if it will happen. We're going to try to hear two eighty-three Prospect yet tonight. Okay, so let's go back to Witherspoon and continue on. So do we, did we? Finish the public portion of the hearing? Is there anyone else, uh, Claudia has indicated they'd like to speak?
Um, can you raise your hand, Marina? I can't find you now. Marina?
He's a panelist now. Must have brought her over.
Okay.
Hi Marina, do you want to speak on this application? Yeah, is that a yes?
Yes, good evening. Uh, Ms. Rabina, could you just give us your address, please? Um, yes, um, Marina Rabina, twenty-eight Quarry Street.
Alright, and um, you swear affirm any testimony you give this up, uh, regarding this matter, uh, will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, I would like to speak briefly as a uh, neighbor who lives in Witherspoon, Jackson, only a, a couple of blocks away. I also am a, a future neighbor, literally upstairs from the cafe. Um, we as members of Tiger Labs are hoping to be moving to this location. And um, also as a parent of my kids have also attended Community Park School, both of my kids did. And I would very much like to support this application because um, I have in the past been to. Not a commercial roaster, but my husband and I went to visit friends in Brooklyn, and we have been to a similar cafe. Where it is uh, somewhat what they're describing, where there were pallets with big bags of beans. And there was the roasting machine there. That was the first time of how I have seen the roasting being done. I was very surprised of how small the machine was and how it did sound like popcorn. And it, it went for a very short time, so it was an interesting experiential. Um, thing to do. Our friends from Brooklyn sort of thought it was really fun to go to a place like that, and um. It seemed like a perfect thing that would attract people to come to Princeton and have.
Marina Rabina. She says.
Please mute yourself.
Yeah.
Thanks for introducing me one more time. So we would very much um, support as neighbors and um. Appreciate the small businesses opening in town. Thanks so much. That's all my comments.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, Claudia, uh, anyone else who's indicated they'd like to speak? I don't see anybody on.
Michael J. Berry the second, he posted a comment and he's on the um. On the screen, Mr. Berry, can you hear me?
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Oh, I can see, okay.
Oh, I see you. Can you turn your monitor on, please?
Yeah, it's you, Mr. Berry.
I don't uh. Let's see. I don't see that uh, option at, at the moment. Um, I'll join as a panelist.
Well, we need to see you.
Wait a minute, are you seeing a message that says join as panelist? You click that. Should.
He's a panelist now. He just needs big figures.
Okay, there you are. We can see you.
Mister Berry, could you give us your, your address, sir, your address, please?
I'm at three thirteen Witherspoon Street.
Alrighty, and do you swear affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Uh, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess I, I, I certainly had some concerns going into this meeting, but I, I feel like the, the testimony a- addressed my concerns uh, reasonably well. Um. You know, it, it, it just sounds like it's a, a rather small scale uh, roasting operation. Um. As I, a- a- as I understand, they, they intend to possibly do the roasting like during business hours. Will people watch? Is that, is, is that correct? I uh.
I think that's what they've indicated so far.
Yeah, I mean. To the extent that's true, I don't see how it could be some uh, noxious fume problem. Um. You know, so I guess uh, I, I, you know, I'm, I, like others, I'm definitely excited to have a coffee shop uh, in, in the neighborhood and um. I'm uh, I, I'm a little on the fence about the roastery, but it's uh, I think overall it, it, it doesn't concern me that much.
Okay. That it. Thank you. Okay, uh, Claudia, once again, anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
I have a Erlyn. Um.
I, okay. Oh, I see. No, I don't see him. Where, where are they? Can you let them in? Okay, I don't see anyone else on the screen.
He's on the second, she's on the screen, Steve.
On the second screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I, well, yeah, but we can't, we can't.
Please unmute yourself for speak. Turn a camera on.
As long as, as long as someone else can see them, I can't.
I, I can't see them either.
Erlyn, did you want to speak tonight? Mrs. Bauman?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I see, I see them. I see, okay, they need to unmute and make themselves visible.
No, but I thought you just said.
He said no, so.
Oh, no, great, okay. That's fine. Uh, Claudia, anyone else?
I see no more hands.
Okay. Um, seeing no more hands, we'll close the pub- public portion of the hearing. Um, Mr. Hair, do you want to sum up before we go into executive session? And I also want to ask, do you want us to continue tonight to a potential vote? Or do you have any additional supporting documentation you'd like to get us before we do vote?
Um, we have a ten, I think we're tending to want to have the vote tonight, and to summarize, the reason we feel that way is that. Um, we haven't heard science. We've, we've heard the one technical expert be criticized. For a fact that we acknowledged early on that he is the father of one of the applicants. But he has no financial interest. So we, we set upfront that Dr. Picard. Has his son as the applicant, but that he is imminently qualified to be able to discuss these matters. So we've had him criticized as being incredible, even though he testified under oath. So we haven't heard anybody say that what he said is inaccurate. So what he said is the only science that I've heard tonight. Um, we've also had people comment about large-scale chemical plants. Large-scale food plants, like a Nabisco, I think they talked, yeah. This is not that. Um, we've had people talk about noxious gases, bad hydrocarbons. This is not that. Um, people said, how do we dress it if there's a problem? Well, I thought that we would have testimony from the Princeton Department of Health. That they just need to be called and said, we're smelling fumes. Um. There was a mistake on that. I thought someone else would be testifying on that on behalf of him. Um, that's what somebody would do if they had a problem with it. Yeah, I think Dr. Picard also testified that if you're near a restaurant. You're getting these VOCs and carbon dioxide and carbon oxide without the benefit of an afterburner. So I haven't heard people in the neighborhood complaining about the nearby restaurants, the ones that I like to go to. I live just a couple of blocks away on Jefferson Road, so. Yeah, we believe that we should proceed to a vote because we haven't heard anything based on science that contradicts what we've said. It sounds like, quite honestly, that some of the testimony is related to the article that I mentioned. There was the bulletin that was attached to the February letter, the NIOSH bulletin. That was talking about commercial coffee roasting facilities and the employee hazards. It wasn't talking about the neighborhood, so. So I. So in summary, we'd like to move forward because we feel like we've made a good case and we haven't heard anything science-based to contradict it.
Yeah, you did, I, I don't know if it was you, but I think uh, Serge Picard mentioned that. That there was additional information that he would like to have the board see.
I think that was Mr. Haley, but yeah.
Yeah, somebody, one of the, one of the applicant's team made that comment. Um.
I'm, I'm happy to circulate the actual source documents for the NIOSH report that was circulated in February. By uh, the member of the public that actually gets down to the data, up to how they generated it. And points out for a facility like this, the dangers are from grinding beans. And from scooping beans out of a plastic container, more than from the roasting. That's where you're gonna get these VOCs. That's where you're gonna get the carbon monoxide. So it, it's just, I'm happy to send those to you. As part of our due diligence on this, we did contact NIOSH. We contacted the person that. Who's, whose articles are the support for that bulletin. And he was the one that pointed us to these articles and said, here's the reports from when we inspected facilities. So. You know, if, if you would like to see that, we are.
It's up to you if you'd like to present it, because again, you know, we don't have it now.
Would it be helpful in making your decision?
I, you have to tell us that if you'd like it, if you'd like us to see it, because you figure it supports your application, we're more than happy to do it. But if you don't have them now, then we'd have to continue.
Um, why don't we just continue?
Continue? Okay. All right, um. Derek, when we, we continue this to the nineteenth? Of April?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many other, how many other hearings do we have already scheduled for the nineteenth?
Two or three. There's a couple in the pipeline, so.
All right, so it's gonna be, we're gonna have to rearrange our schedule, I would imagine. Okay, all right, so.
Is there any other information? Being continued that you would like the applicant to provide? I, I, I had the same thing in my notes. I think it was Mr. Haley who said, you know, I'm happy to get you. Some additional information, I guess, mechanics or the uh.
The only thing I have in my notes was, do we want the um. The person from the Princeton Department of Health to speak to this? Did they review the application?
I know he was aware of the application. He was contacted by some of the, I, I missed, Mr. Leach contacted a few uh. Members of the Environmental Commission. Um. So he did inform me that a permit is not required from him and that if there was a complaint. The health, uh, Board of Health is in charge of uh. Investigating like air pollution or aromas, and it would end up in, in uh, the health departments.
Can we ask him to, would it be appropriate to ask him to give us an opinion on this project?
I, I can ask him, but I mean, he's not an expert in, uh, he's a general health officer. He's not a scientific expert in aromas and VOCs, so.
Okay. All right, so, so uh.
Let, let me, let me just come back to that point. I am looking at my notes, just so that when the applicant returns, you know, they, they. If there's something else you want to hear about from them, this gives them the chance to provide it, so.
Excuse me, maybe there's the procedure, uh, when we said we want to continue with the motion to go to vote now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I guess.
At the table for next week, just to clarify. And the only information that was uh, discussed by my business partner Jonathan was the, I guess, the specs of the afterburner. Uh, because we had many discussions or questions on. Uh, and Mr. Floyd clarified a few points also on. The functionality of it, if it's on or off, and uh, different sensors, and if that can be detected, et cetera. And I think we addressed those uh, pretty clearly as per se to the afterburner. But we have the spec sheet that uh, if Bill wants to submit to the board right now, we can do that also, if that's a benefit. I don't know that it is, but.
Like, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the board, but at quarter to eleven, I'm not sure that um. They're really gonna be able. They're really going to be able to review any specs, but if the board feels differently, then.
So let's not submit this specs.
I, I agree with you, Karen. I don't know if we'll. Have a chance to objective, objectively review anything now and comment on it. And then go into executive session.
I think you have the testimony of, of Dr. Picard that these are. Well-known, well-established. Technologies that. Have been for a long time. So I don't know that the specs would actually help.
Okay, so back to where we were. Um. Do you, Mr. Hare, do you want to continue?
And by continue, we'd like to.
You want to continue, you want to, do you want to carry the hearing or do you want to try to finish tonight?
Let's finish tonight with a vote, please, if, if possible.
Okay, all right, well. Then, then uh. Then if you'd like to basically sum up before we go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I do have a couple of questions and maybe. You know, and it, it sprung from. The public comments, um. Maybe they don't see any other. Issues that were said or raised that need to be responded to. Uh, but I want to kind of make sure on a couple. Um, if I could.
Yes.
I think, um. Um, you know, there's some comment that we're not quite sure. What is the percentage? Of removal? By. The afterburner that you plan to use? Is it, you know? Ninety, is it ninety to ninety-five? Is it ninety-five to ninety-eight? Um, there was some comment that that's been some, somewhat different today from. A month ago. Um. And the same thing for the. Number of times, the frequency and hours of when you plan to run the roaster. If you could clear that up for the board, I think that would help.
Um, absolutely. Maybe I can take that one. Mr. Floyd, the uh, after, the afterburner is not purchased. And therefore we're in touch with the clean stream. There's a catalytic as was, I forgot which gentleman mentioned it, and then the thermal oxidizer. Uh, the catalytic goes to up to ninety-five percent removal and the thermal up to ninety-nine, and that's why in the presentation. We basically have uh, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent removed. So if that answers the question. Um. And on the hours, the math that we actually produced during this hearing tonight equates to exactly what's in the presentation. Uh. And with the number of batches for the five hundred. Pounds per week. Was the sixteen point seven. Um. Or call it sixteen batches to roast. So that did not change. We're allowing for uh, some potential, and that's in the, the application. Some potential of increased volume. Hopefully, as a business owner, we want to do more, not less. But that's the minimum requirement that's always been in there that accounts for the actual volume that we have right now. With a buffer.
Um. If you could remind me what you said today, I can't find in my notes. On that frequency, how many times a week? And how many hours on those days? Um, you would be roasting?
Uh, once to twice a week, and it's basically a hundred sixty minutes total roasting time.
Hundred and sixty minutes total roasting.
And that's. At five hundred pounds per week, which we don't. Sell or produce or consume right now.
Okay, hundred and sixty minutes, because. The last meeting you said two times a week. Three point five to four point five hours. A week. Uh, on those weeks. On those times, excuse me, two times. You know, because I did write that down a month ago.
Yep, and the difference is we basically locked down, the coffee roasters are purchased also. Uh, it's a fifteen kilo roaster. And uh, that we're. Looking to purchase and that uh, basically clarifies the math for five hundred pounds per week.
Okay. Any uh, comment you care to make on the? Assessment. Um. By one of the residents that the plume can travel a tenth of a mile or does travel?
I.
And if you don't, you know.
No, I don't. Okay, my, my general comment is. Uh, we're talking about food processing here. Uh, people brought in or different comments were brought in for. Way different processes from chemical plants to uh. Industrial food processing plants, solvents, et cetera, so.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna stick in our lane if you don't mind.
Well, just, just to point out, the, the person that said that. Was the person that visited the Rocky Hill Roasting Site. And that's where he got that. So it's apples and apples.
But I'm, he got that from what? From walking around the facility and deciding that's.
And talking to the operators and, and asking them. That was his testimony. So I just wondered if you wanted to respond to that.
I, again, I don't know the volume of the Rocky Hill facility, the frequency of roasting. Uh. Everything is relative and. I guess so is the plume in this case, if we're talking about. Uh, I don't know if that's a small world, uh. Coffee roasting facility that has coffee and fifteen Whole Foods around here at retail level. We're nothing to that. We're so. Um. I, I can't speak to prevailing winds or plumes or, but. Okay, I can only speak to what we have. With an afterburner. And by the way, our coffee doesn't smell like burnt popcorn with uh.
I was saying, oh, I, I've thought of asking if you wanted to respond to that one.
Yeah, it's the same aromas as uh, that comes out through the stack as in the coffee. And actually, the second way to release the most aromas is to grind the coffee. Yeah.
Mr. Just a clarification, I'm just trying to clarify, you said the percentage of. For want of a better word, removal with the afterburner. You mentioned both the catalytic converter and a thermal burner. Are you proposing to use both? Are you saying you're going to use?
That's why we put a range, one of them between ninety-five to ninety-nine, and that's the stated range for the.
So you're not, you're not sure tonight whether it would be catalytic or thermal?
Agreed, yep, correct.
Okay. All right.
May I, may I ask a question of Mr. Picard?
Sure.
Several, oh, first of all, can you schedule the roasting so it doesn't take place during school hours or possibly on the weekends? That's question number one. Second question is. If you had an elevated exhaust pipe, would you then have? Greater dispersal so that you don't have as much of the plume at ground level?
Uh, the answer to the second question is yes. Uh, the higher it goes, uh. The more dispersion you have. Um. And less proximity to. Local if. There's something to be detected, which we're uh, clearly stating the opposite with the afterburner process. Uh. And yes, we can always work to adjust the roasting hours. Uh. To, I don't know if you were mentioning to do it during weekends or not weekends.
Sorry, the point is to do it. Where the, the plume, if it's wind is going in one way. So that it wouldn't reach schoolchildren. Or maybe, you know, outside actively playing. Having elevated respiration rates and so forth. So, you know, if you could. Schedule your roasting outside of school hours. Which include certain parts of the day during the work week. Or the weekend.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. All right, um, well, first just to keep driving, uh, Mr. Uh. Deb. Deb Awala. Um. Again, we're not, we're, we're not going to hear your application this evening. Uh, we, it's, it's uh, just a few minutes before eleven. And uh, I think we're going to have to carry that to April nineteenth. I'm very sorry, but that's all we can do.
Thank you. Would it be possible to schedule me first on that agenda, please?
Uh, I. Don't believe so. I think we, well. How would that work, Karen? We should wrap up the first, the three hundred witherspoon application first and then move on.
Uh. Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the question is whether the board is going to vote on three hundred witherspoon tonight or whether the board wants to consider it. Um.
It is eleven, it's ten fifty-seven.
I know.
I guess, I guess we could just. Board members, do you want to, do you want to try to vote on this tonight? Discuss it and vote on it tonight, or would you like to carry it?
I want to vote on it tonight.
You do? Okay.
But that's me, that we've had. It's other people.
Okay. Uh, Karen, not Karen, Bernice, Michael, George.
I'm okay to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm okay.
So long as we can do it, so long as we can do it within a reasonable time period, sure.
Well, we'll give it a try. Okay, Michael?
Um, yeah.
All right. Let's continue on. All right, so, um.
Can I, I responded, Mr. Dabrowala? About the agenda next month, I'm sorry.
We're going to try to finish it tonight, Mr. Dabrowala. If we don't. Since we're in the midst of it, it, it would most probably have to be heard first, but we'll, we'll be going into executive session. There won't be any more presentations. There may be some questions of, from the board of the applicant. But there's going to be uh. No public, additional public comment that we can see right now.
Right, I, I understand and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You will be first on the agenda, assuming this case is. Voted on tonight. On April nineteenth.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience. Okay, all right, so.
Uh, did you take jurisdiction for the?
Yes, I, I think earlier I'd said that they had jurisdiction tonight, so yeah.
Yeah, we took jurisdiction on both, so we're good.
We did.
Okay, so, um. Mr. Hare, do you want to sum up? Or did you do that already?
I think he did.
Okay.
I'm at about three times, so you.
Okay, good. You summed up the sum up, okay. All right, we're going to go into executive session now and uh, so board members. Let's discuss it. Comments, questions, motions?
You know, in terms of maybe giving the board a structure, you do have your planner's memo. And. That memo reviews. Uh, the criteria and what the applicant needed to present to you by way of. So that might give you a structure. Uh, for discussing it. Unless somebody just want, and honestly, even if somebody is prepared now to make a motion without discussion. Um, again, for the purposes of the record and. Um. To be able to create a resolution that reflects what your reasons are. Uh, I'd be suggesting that anyway, that any motion now actually. Um. Explain based on the criteria. Why, you know, why you come to the determination that you do.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh. I guess to the applicant. I assume that to make this financially viable, you have to be able to sell roasted coffee commercially, is that true?
You, you, sorry, the commercially sold at.
Well, I assume that you need to sell coffee outside your own. Outside your own use.
No. Uh. You mean to, basically to become a roasting, if we're. Just narrowing down to the roasting. Aspect, we need to sell to other people to make that profitable?
Yeah, yes.
No, that's not the case. We're, the whole business purpose is to. Attract people to our coffee shop. And the service and the experience based off of that to start roasting for. Let's say other uh. Businesses or call it white label roasting, that's zero, doesn't have the volume, doesn't have the capacity, doesn't have. Anything that would make it volumetrically more profitable than. The capacity that's there.
So if we limited you to only being able to roast for your own purposes, that'd be.
For our business, for sacred, and we do a couple of restaurants in town under the sacred.
No, 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 only for the use in that cafe.
We, we currently sell to a few restaurants in town. We need to continue to support those. I think Serge is just saying if you were to cap us at our existing. External client base and our own. I think we'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, and I'm not, I, the question is about limiting it only your own cafe.
But we.
I mean, my, my concern about it is that. It is, does seem to me that it is an exception to the food processing rule. That you are, there's no way to keep you from. Uh, roasting coffee all day long, five days a week, if you wanted to. And you claim you don't want to, and I believe you, I don't think you're. That you are a businessman and you are going to be looking for more restaurants and more places to use your coffee in. And I think that takes it beyond kind of the art. Product.
It's possible to impose a condition as to the hours of roasting that are permitted. Is that not the correct, Ms. Casey?
Uh, you, you certainly can impose a condition. I'm, I'm a little, I, I guess the question would be part of the testimony. In support of the application from the applicant, in, you know, in terms of advancing purposes of zoning, is that this is going to be sort of an innovative experience for customers. So. If they're not allowed to roast during school hours. And I don't know if they have. Baseball games, softball games at community park school or other activities after school. Or in the weekends. Then. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure when then customers will get to enjoy. Um. Watching this experience. Because I assume they plan to have customers during the day. In the evening, I don't, I don't know what the applicant's hours are. I don't know if they provided testimony about that. Um. But. Uh, if a condition is imposed that they can't do this during school hours. For. School athletics or anything where the kids are going to be there. Uh, I don't, I don't know then. When the public will enjoy watching it, and if the public can't enjoy watching it, then. I'm, I'm not sure then, I mean, that seems to take away from one of their arguments, which is it's an innovative. Um, type of activity. And will attract. Um, and people will come in and instead of going to coffee somewhere else, they'll say, let's see how this operates. So. Um. You certainly can impose that condition. Um. But. That's why it might be helpful to kind of go through the. Proves that the applicant needed to make to you. Because I think certainly one of the things they argued was. It's. Experimental, it's innovative, it's very interesting, and you know, this will help business into that part of town. Um. So. Going to tell them they can't, they're very restricted on when they can do it. I don't, I'm not sure, the applicant said that's okay, but. Um. I'm, I'm not sure then how uh. This fulfills one of its purposes, because that's, that's uh. Certainly one of the reasons that was advanced. But this is a very. Interesting thing to do, so. Uh. Maybe, maybe if we try and, and I, I'm pressing you to try and go through the criteria because I want to be clear on the record, why, whether you're. why, whether you're approving or not approving, I want it to be clear why. Not just a motion that says, I vote we approve, or the opposite, I vote we deny. Either way, I think we need to indicate all right, wha- wha- why? Why are you doing what you're doing? So, and that was a long answer to your short question, George, which is yes. If you wanna impose operating restrictions for the roasting, yes, you can.
Uh, and along with that condition would be, you know, some sort of elevation of the exhaust to increase dispersion of any contaminants. Um, also.
I think you're, you could do that, you could impose that. The board wants to, they could impose that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Yes, Donna?
Um, I, um, would go even further. I'm, I, um, I'm not persuaded by the application. I'm, I'm not persuaded that there's special reasons um, to be granting it. I'm not persuaded that it, if we said no, it would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. And I'm not persuaded that there would be no detriment to the public good. Um, or impair the zoning plan, because it's prohibited in all zones.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, um, other board members like to chime in? George?
I, I will make a motion to approve on the grounds that it is innovative, that it does enhance, um, extending, uh, commercial and business activities uh, into an area that is rapidly increasing, and will enhance that activity. I would like to make that approval condition on roasting not taking place during school activity hours, whether they be formal classroom or after school. Um, and that a schedule be posted as to when the roasting will take place. Furthermore, that an elevated exhaust, uh, be installed. I don't have the exact, how high it would be, but, um, you know, that to be sufficiently high to minimize ground, uh, or ground level, um, plume dispersal.
My only concern with that, George, is how are we gonna enforce that? What if, what if the, what if a school activity spontaneously takes place? The school decides that they're gonna have, they're gonna have kids, uh, an after-school game. How do, how do we, how do we? We can't, it, it may not come up. It may be spur of the moment. And how do we enforce that?
I mean, I'm, while you're talking, I'm trying to think about, you could enforce that, and um, I guess coordination between the, uh, the roasting and the school authorities, so that there's a published schedule. So in particular, as to the innovative aspect, if you wanna see the roasting, you know you should have to show up at four o'clock on Thursdays, uh, for example, um, and, you know, that it would be I'm not sure how to phrase this as a condition, but incumbent on the applicant to be in touch with the school authorities at community park, um, in order to find out if they have to adjust their roasting schedule. I'm not sure how you'd phrase that exactly as a condition, but I think.
I don't know, I, I just think that's a very difficult thing to monitor. I mean, it, it puts a lot of burden on the applicants, and quite frankly, the school, the school board. You know, I mean, it's, it's the school administration. It's, I guess we're leaving it up to the school. If the school decides they want an activity, they have to let.
No. No, no, I would, you know, that, I mean, how would I do it if we're designing it? I would say, you know, to be, A, you know, yes, you're in touch with the school calendar and you see what's there. Uh, as to spontaneity, well, beginning of every week, or maybe on Friday, you call up the school and you say, uh, what's coming up next week? Cause if there's something going on, then we'll adjust our, our roasting schedule. And, you know, everything would be posted, um, you know, within the facility and also online. Um, I mean, that's practically is a very solvable logistical issue. It gets, and as to if they, if there's some complaint, well, then somebody in the school or some parent calls the health department and tells them knock it off.
Okay, and we gotta make it, we have to make it fair for both parties.
I agree.
Well, since we, we have a motion pending.
And we're discussing the motion.
You are. So, in your discussion, then, I would ask that you also discuss in what the applicant had to demonstrate to you was positive and negative criteria, and I know Mr. Dobremowski is I think his videos muted, but he can chime in certainly. If he disagrees with anything I'm gonna say now, they had to prove, prove positive and negative criteria. Um, this is a use variance, a D one variance, uh, five affirmative votes are needed to prove it. They also need a variance for not having a loading dock. Um, that's, oh, we would, you know, we refer to that as a C variance. Um, they already received a loading dock variance in a twenty twenty site plan. I'm not sure if it was the applicant or the property owner, but our zoning officer indicates he feels this proposed use is an intensification of, um, that variance. Um, there was some testimony offered to you, but how they're gonna get coffee to the site and how they're gonna take it away, so. The motion to approve would both grant this use with whatever conditions you want, and also the variance for not having a loading dock. As indicated in Mr. Dobremowski's memo, to receive a D variance, the positive criteria, the applicant would have to show, quote, special reasons. That's both the promotion of the purposes of zoning, and you've heard that a lot of times with C two variances. Those purposes can range from general welfare to residual aspect to, uh, there are many transportation, et cetera, and I know the board has dealt with this many times in the past. Applicant also has to show that this use is particularly suited to this property. So I believe the analysis is really, um, is it this use at this particular location that is suited and would allow you to reconcile allowing a manufacturing use where the zoning is against it? And I know at other meetings, you've heard planners tell you, well, we have to reconcile, you're giving us a variance, but this use may not be permitted, so they make their argument. Um, it is true that, that if it were hardship, or would it deprive them of reasonable use, that could provide another basis. Um, and that's up to the board to decide whether there's been any testimony to that effect or any proofs. And then we look at the negative criteria, and I believe the, your planner, Mr. Dobremowski, has indicated that uh, at least the applicant's argument is that what was intended by the ordinance regarding prohibition of manufacturing is not, uh, the case here, that this is really retail, it's not really manufactured. Um, and if you grant this variance, is this going to negatively impact either zoning ordinance? Or the intent of you? So, these were the proofs the applicant needed to make to you. So, as you're considering the motion, um, I'm just gonna ask that if you're, if you're voting yes, then you indicate, so what George said was in support of his motion, it's innovative. And, and that may be the case. Um, I don't know if anyone has thoughts on whether this use on this site is particularly suited. Because again, the idea is the applicant needs to get around the prohibition. So your approval needs to support or demonstrate if you're approving it. Um, wha- what factually persuaded you? Because as I prepare the resolution, um, particularly because we've had a lot of public interest tonight in it, you need to, it has to be explained, and I explain it by following what you say at the meeting, and what your findings are tonight. And of course, tonight, there's still a resolution to be prepared, and you will get in advance, and the applicant can see it, and that will spell out everything, but, um, I still need your guidance in terms of why you find something persuasive or not. So George indicated he felt it's innovative. Um, does the board, anybody else on the board have thoughts about as to whether this site, you know, this use on this site is particularly suited?
I, I think, before we go to that, I don't think that this is that innovative. It's a coffee shop. You wanna, you wanna add roasting. It's been done by many, many, uh, businesses in, I gather, appropriate places. So, I don't see the innovation. And I, I don't give it that much weight. Now, if you wanna go to, is the site suited? Um, for, is, is, is the use suited for this property? And believe me, I, I came into this meeting and last meeting not having an opinion and actually leaning towards this. Um, but we got a site that's close to the school, a school. It could have been a site that isn't close to a school and isn't that close to residential. And mind you, this is not a permitted use. So the site, in my opinion, is not making that hurdle on being suited, you know, the use suited for the property. And I can't act like there weren't neighbors that came out. I understand they weren't scientists. I'm at a disadvantage that the municipality doesn't provide scientific experts. Um, so I gotta go on what I, what I heard and what I think. Um, I did do some readings. So on those two issues, I think on the general wel- welfare, well-being, and I appreciate all the people they will hire for the cafe, but one of the things, and I said it earlier, for the roasting, it's one person, that's only one additional person to offset giving a variance for a commercial use, which is basically roasting. Um, so that's just some of the, the, the proofs there. Um, I'm sorry, this is going on and on. I wanted to wait for other people to speak, but nobody's speaking, um, hardly. I mean, George did, and my reaction to George is, if you wanna put that many conditions, that means you're not comfortable approving without the conditions.
True. That's right.
Can I, uh, be?
Bernice, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I, I would, I would like to be able to approve this, um, but with the, the conditions that George has, uh, proposed, I think that it is, um, that's complex to coordinate, and, um, it, it, it's kind of recognizing that, uh, you, you're not expecting the afterburners are doing what they're intended to do. Um, so if, if there was a way of, um, objectively, you know, verifying that, that, I, I don't know if there's a way of, of um, proving that, um, a, a pipe of a certain height, a vent pipe of a certain height is gonna address, um, you know, any, that the five to ten percent that might be escaping still, uh, of, um, compounds and odors, um, I, I, I would like to be able to approve this, um. But that's, that's my issue with that, you know, if we're suggesting that the vent pipe should be taller, you know, by how much, who's, who's gonna determine how tall that is, and if that's having the intended effect. Um, so, that, that's where I am with this.
My, my concern was, again, enforcement of any restrictions. I think it's gonna be very, very difficult to coordinate between the applicant and the school. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be a burden on the business, and it's gonna be a burden on the school. And I think the, the mechanism for enforcement, unfortunately, would probably fall on Mr. Bridger. I mean, who would people call? If, if this was taking place when there were school activities and, and, uh, and a parent's complained, who would they, would they complain to Mr. Bridger? Would they complain to the administration? I think enforcement would be very, very difficult. And, and again, I think I, I agree that, that with this many conditions, it's probably not in everybody's best interest, I guess, lack of a better term, to approve this. I don't know. I'm, I'm still up in the air about it, but I think the restrictions are gonna be too involved.
We don't have a second for this, right?
No, we don't. I was just gonna ask. We have a motion to approve. We do not have a second. Um, the other factor Mr. Hare had brought up, he said, you know, there hasn't been any scientific testimony in opposition. Um, you did hear from, um, Dr. Picard. Concerns have been raised that he's father of one of the owners, applicant, so again, for the purposes of the record, the board is allowed to weigh expert testimony. You can believe some, none, or all of it. Um, I don't know if that relationship also, if there's you know, in terms of how you're weighing it, if that, uh, is playing into your decision. Um, but all these things would need to be addressed in our resolution, so I'm throwing it out. Um, just to see what I'm hearing back from board members. And I guess we can ask if you were to hear some additional testimony from the applicant, not from an expert that, um, had this family relationship, would that make a difference to board?
Yeah, I think, um, from my part, I think some additional testimony would have been helpful, or would be helpful, um, around, um, I mean, I think the, this, the requirements that George was saying, I think are a bit onerous, and I think hard to handle. I think that if the, if the reburners can actually handle ninety-five percent of the, of the noxious fumes and VOCs, and you have a higher pipe, it seems to me that if I felt truly convinced of those factors, then um, I would be much more, um, in favor of it. I am, I'm largely in favor of it, but I do hear the neighbors. And, um, but I also would have kind of liked to have heard a little bit more about, you know, there's a lot of neighboring restaurants that are sending out a lot of VOCs um, in that neighborhood, Mexican restaurant, Greek restaurant, meeting house, and they're in a residential neighborhood. And if someone had, if we'd had some testimony about what is the level of VOCs that those businesses are sending out un- unadulterated, um, or un- un- mitigated. Um, and, and they rise to a high degree, then, and, and we understood that that was the case, then it would make this even much more easy to pass, because, you know, tho- those are occurring right next door too, so it it would make the. Because, you know, tho- those are occurring right next door too. So it, it would make the testimony from. Uh, a lot of the neighbors less compelling. But if we knew that the re-burner would, would take care of the fumes to a very high degree, also what I would think is that. If there was some sort of external alarm on the re-burner, so if it did fail or shut off. That the roasting process would shut off as well. That seems like that might be a way to mitigate. Uh, you know, that if it, if it did shut off, that there would be no fumes. So I think that, you know, I, I came into it really wanting to approve it. I think it's a great, I, I think it's an interesting idea. I think it would be nice to have in the neighborhood. But we are being asked to change the zoning. And, um, so there has to be. A certain degree of rigor that we need to go through to feel fully comfortable and, um. I'm not quite, not quite there yet.
Well, we have a motion to approve the application. We do not have a second. Is there a second? Cause we've got the motion on the floor now, so we need to deal with it.
But can I, am I allowed to interrupt at this point? I mean, would it be helpful in response to some of this testimony or questions that we? Bring in an afterburner expert. We had talked to the company and asked him if he would be available. Um, he was president, but would that be helpful to the board if we were to bring in? Uh, someone from Clean Stream Afterburner, the, the president of the company. Uh, would it be helpful if I put on the screen where it says, uh, ninety-five percent? Uh, from their brochure, it's. We were a bit hesitant because this is old technology. It's like the catalytic converter on your car. Once a year, you get it checked, I think. So if that would be helpful, we could put it off. A month, we could try to, we could get someone from the afterburner company to speak. I would probably reach out to Mr. Roser and ask him to come convey to you what he conveyed to me. Um, he was approached about the, 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 the neighbors and that he. He could tell you how he felt about it, rather than me repeating what he said to me. Would that be helpful?
For me, for me, it would be helpful. Um, I mean, yeah, there is the brochure and I do, it is a pretty simple technology. So I mean, it's not that I don't. I do believe it would work. I do personally, but it's, you know, there's. There's a lot of other people involved in this. And so it's, it's really just kind of almost getting. The people that would be, you know, directly, it is near a school and it is, and I know it's, it's difficult for me because I know. I know the applicants personally and I know some of the people that were speaking up personally. So I'm in a really difficult position, actually. Pardon me?
I'm in the same boat with you.
So, uh, thi- this is definitely, I'm finding this challenging. Um, cause I, I think there's a lot of very good aspects of this application, but I do also understand some of the, um. Uh, some of the conditions that other people are bringing up, even though I think that they're largely unfounded.
Mr. Davich, just for the record, um, when you indicated you know. Participants personally, I'm assuming though that you feel you can be neutral and that you, you don't have any. Pre-disposition either way, correct?
I don't.
Knowing people.
I know them, I know they're not right, very close, but I know them, um, they're neighbors and my kids went to school with them. But I also know some of the people that were, um, you know, that were in the neighborhood. So, um. I almost wanted to recuse myself at the beginning of the meeting. But, um, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have a lot of, uh. Uh, I think we may have just had enough people to, uh, to vote, so.
Right, but just, just again, just again, because I, you know, it's hard to tell. You know, what happens with a, with a matter once there's a resolution of approval or denial. You feel you are neutral, correct? You're neutral in this application.
Yes, I, I'm neutral.
Very good. Okay. That's what, that's what I wanted to make clear.
Mr. Hare, that would not be persuasive to me. I'm, I'm, uh. I, I don't like the zoning rule change, uh, for what I perceive to be a commercial. Uh, roasting company. But, uh, and I would like to add to that, that is something that we, yeah, and that is that. This cafe is going to open whether it has a roaster or not.
Yeah.
And it's going to add to the community and it's going to add to the neighborhood and all those other things. It just isn't going to have an aesthetically. Roasters in there if we voted down. Um, and, and, you know, like I said, I do believe. These guys and what they're saying about it. But I can't, it's just hard for me to believe that they're only going to use it a couple hours. If they could and if they develop a business model of selling coffee commercially and so.
And, and that's, those are good points.
Motion of that way, I would be happy with that.
Well, we, we, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that. And, and Mr. Picard testified that they have a commercial facility in Canada. I mean, when we first, I was first working with Serge and John on this, I asked, will this become commercial? And that's when he explained to me the scale that you need for packaging.
And now I understand, I understand that it's not going to become a plan like the one in Canada. But you're already selling to restaurants in town. And if more restaurants decide that you have the best coffee in the surrounding area, they're going to buy it and. And the commercial value of that roaster is going to go up and up and up.
Well, as an analogy, there's a lot of bakers. That distribute their baked goods.
Yeah, are we going to go back and forth with the applicant? Continuous. At some point, we, we need to do what we got to do. Individually. I mean, it's, it's not a.
I, I guess at first, yes, we do have a motion pending. I think, Mr. Hare. I, I believe what he was trying to find out was, would it be helpful? To have this additional testimony? Would it help any board members in their consideration? And if it did, then the applicant would. You know, ask, fine, go ahead and carry it to next month.
Exactly. We'd be happy to do that if that would help anybody.
Well, I mean, I think you have, Mr. Hare, you have to make that decision whether you feel based on this discussion, if it's going to be helpful.
Well, we'd like to do that then, because we did talk to the afterburner company. And we would have the gentleman from there, the president of the company, come talk about the technology, how fail-safe it is. And what you could expect from it. And how much he would worry about what would happen to the neighbors based on his expertise in the technology.
And additionally, I want to state that, uh, we'd be okay with, uh, working and having it bearing on our own. Interests of the business to monitoring, uh, with the school. You said it would be burning some, but we're willing to do that. Again, we're just talking about roasting a few hours, so we would take that on and. Not a, an expert on that matter, but we can propose immediately that, uh, we'd be okay to. Raise a stack, uh, above, uh, the school, uh, as height or the surrounding houses. Something that the code would allow. I'm not his only expert, but. We're already one story, uh, high, uh, as a building. Uh, the one thing, and I appreciate Mr. Davich bringing it up. I don't know how we could bring expertise to monitor. VOCs from restaurants and the local restaurants. And the last thing we'd ever want to be would be, uh, harming. Other local businesses. That's not our expertise. We brought. The one expert in the field that we were, I was familiar with, obviously, uh, you can find, uh, with records and try to find other ones. Uh, that could testify, but again. And I'll just say, I took offense to that because, uh, there's that thing of being under oath. Uh, and you're not lying. You're like in any other. Testimony or court proceeding, proceeding where you have, uh, experts on both sides. And we brought our expert that you put under oath that, uh. And stated the, the truth now. Talking about the relationship and the fact that, that, uh, kind of avoids, uh. His expertise as, yes, my dad, but also thirty-five year expert in conference and a worldwide expert on. Food processing, et cetera. So I just want to make that clear that when you're under oath, you're not supposed to be lying. And that's been implied many times tonight.
So I guess in summary, we'd like to carry till the next meeting then.
All right.
Excuse me. It would be carried to May. We have six, you have six cases already for the next hearing. And these people have waited. From the last hearing already. So that'll give you more than enough time to provide experts for the roaster. The afterburner, which one you're going to use, I think you should decide on. Maybe get some data on how tall an exhaust pole goes. I don't think the school issue is enforceable. You know, there's kids there at four o'clock at night, there's kids there at five o'clock. So I think these issues have to get. Some more information so the board can make an intelligent decision. Um, but I, I, the next meeting is, is got too many cases on it and, um. I think, uh, you'd have to go into May twenty-fourth meeting.
Wasn't there also a discussion about whether the DEP permit was required or not and? Uh, you were having discussions on that. Maybe it would be helpful. I mean, DEP. Would possibly offer some expertise from a governmental authority that you could indicate. Either because of the size, you don't come under regulation and what is that size? Or you do come under regulation. I mean, DEP does require air quality permits for emergency generators. So it would be hard for me not to imagine. That there is the potential that if this had fumes that were a problem, the DEP might try, have a regulation on it. And.
As it may, as it may with restaurants, so again.
Yeah. So if you could provide anything that shows what the regulations are. And where, where you come in under them and where, would this be permissible?
Okay, we, we're happy to do that. We actually did send a determination request to the DEP. And we spoke into them and, um, we should be hearing feedback from them soon.
Maybe that could shed some light on to the, to that question.
Okay.
Uh, George, you want to withdraw your motion then?
Yes, consider the motion withdrawn.
Okay, so then for the information of those who are still listening from the public. This hearing will be continued to May twenty-four. There will not be additional noticing sent out by the applicant. Um, so the next hearing in this matter will be May twenty-four. At the board's meeting time of seven thirty, it will be the zoo. And all the login information will remain the same.
Okay. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, well, we just, the, the items that we carried to the end of the hearing.
Yeah. Well, do you want to keep carrying them?
No, I think, I think, uh, let's carry those to the next hearing.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I think we need to consider having another meeting.
I'm sorry?
I think we need to consider having more meetings.
Having more meetings?
Yeah.
Tell you what, let's have.
So much fun.
You can email that between you and him. Let's get off of this.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
Yes. Please.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right.